Well, good evening, everyone. Today is June 6th. We're calling to order the City of Carson Housing Authority's accessory agency and council agenda. The public may address the members of the city council on any matters within the jurisdiction of the city council or on any items on the agenda of the city council. During the desert, may the public comment period. There will be two oral communication sessions, one for agendaized items, comment about items on the agenda, and the other for non-agendaized items, comments about items not on the agenda. The oral communication of the portion of the agenda is limited to a duration of one hour unless otherwise approved by the city council. Comment time is normally three minutes, depending on the number of speakers. Livestream of the city's, the city council meeting can be viewed livestream at www.carson.ca.gov or on the YouTube, www.youtube.com/c/cityofcarsoncaliforniaofficialyoutube. You can also view the council meeting via Spectrum 35 and AT&amp;T Channel 99. Written communications can be dropped off at the city clerk's office or in the white box outside of City Hall. The cutoff time to submit any written communication is 3:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Written comments dropped off at the city clerk's office or at the white box or any email received will not be read aloud at the city council meeting but will be circulated to the city council and incorporated into the records. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Dear.
Present.
Councilmember Rojas.
Present.
Councilmember Hicks.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Hilton.
Present.
Mayor Davis-Hunt.
Present. I'd like to flag some food pie. Councilman Dear, please.
May we please stand and face the flag? Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you.
Tonight, we're honored to have none other than Reverend Raymond Baker of Prevailing Faith Ministries for our invocation. Reverend.
I'd like to say good evening to Mayor and Mayor Pro Tim and all of the council people that are present and all those that are present here today. If you would please bow your heads in a word of prayer. Father God, we come, first of all, to thank you. You've been mighty good to us. You've been better to us than we've been to our own selves. So we come tonight to thank you and give you praise that you watched over us all night last night, woke us up to see a day that we never seen before. And so we thank you. We ask that you come in the midst of this, your people, Father, and touch hearts and minds that we may become one, Father, in our decision-making, in our getting along together, in our dealing with this community. Thank you for those that are here. Bless, keep blessing our mayor, our mayor pro team, and all of those that are here today for as they may do your will. And in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen, and thank God.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Reverend. That's good. Madam City Clerk, I don't see any closed session, but I hear you may want to add.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like the council to consider adding a subsequent need item. An item has come to my attention after the posting of the agenda that cannot wait until the next meeting. We need to have a decision by the 15th, so I ask the council to consider adding it.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to add an urgency item at the request of the city attorney.
I'll sign it.
But you want to tell us what it is.
Exactly. Thank you.
Before we actually vote on it.
It's under existing litigation in the matter of Cam Carson versus City of Carson. Thank you.
So that's the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. Please cast your vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to recess into closed session. We should be back, maybe even before 6:00 because we have a large presentation, so it should not take that long.
It won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi there.
We're getting ready to start the meeting, so could you have your inside voice? Everyone, all my student athletes, you look wonderful. Madam City Attorney, could you report out on closed session items, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council added a subsequent need item in the matter of Camp Carson versus City of Carson There is no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, we have a representative from LAUSD, and I know he's on a time constraint, so could he come forward, please? We're going to go at our order just for a moment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Andre Spicer, I'm the Region South Superintendent responsible for 210 schools, including the champion Carson Colts. It's a pleasure to be back with you all. This is a homecoming for me, as you know. I started my career here in Carson, and I was a Carson resident for over 15 years. I taught at Curtis Middle School for 14 years. It is a pleasure to be back serving the students of Carson and the families. So I just want to reintroduce myself and reiterate how dedicated Region South is to the success of every child in the city.
Thank you so much. And welcome back home. Item number two, to my Carson family, we're going to hear from our captain of the Carson Sheriff Station because he too has to get back and take care of our city. Captain Jones from the Carson Sheriff Station.
staff, and to you, the residents of City of Carson. I just have a few updates from the station since our last meeting. A couple of things we've been involved in and things the deputies have done. We had our memorial run just to pay homage and remember those families and those officers who've paid the ultimate sacrifice. So we were so happy to do our memorial run and be able to support them. We supported and went out to a resource fair at Starbucks just to go out and hand out some information and show another opportunity to partner with one of our community partners. Our community relations staff went out and visited one of our local Girl Scout troops, and it was a good outing. They were able to just remind those young women that they are someone, to help build their self-esteem, just remind them that they have the world at their hands and they could be anyone, and don't let anyone tell them they can't be anyone. On the 24th, we had our coffee with the Carson event with the help of prevailing ministries, and so it was so good to go out there. We had a great turnout from our residents, as well as some other people in our city and other businesses. A lot of good conversation, and we learned a lot from some things from the residents. The team went out, we helped support IKEA, they had their 30th anniversary breakfast. I was like, wow, I didn't realize IKEA's been in the city for that long. So it was really good to go out there. Got some cinnamon rolls while we were there, and so it was a good time. We're lucky and happy to announce we had two more explorers graduate, so our explorer pool is growing, and we're happy to bring those young people in and just help them grow in life and learn how to become young adults. This morning, we, in partnership with ARCO and Marathon, we supported the Special Olympics torch run event, a very good event we had over at the refinery off of 223rd and Wilmington. So the team was very happy about that. We're really excited. We had the privilege a couple of years ago with Mayor Pro Tem to do it, but we're really excited coming up. We're going to be doing a game changer event with Dignity Health Sports Park. And the good thing about this event is we bring folks in throughout the community, other law enforcement agencies, and we talk about perception, we talk about behaviors and outcomes, as well as it gives us the opportunity to just, as law enforcement, come together with each other.
We're getting ready to start the meeting, so could you have your inside voice? Everyone, all my student athletes, you look wonderful. Thanks. Okay. We're reconvening. We're reconvening to open session. Madam City Attorney, could you report out on closed session items, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council added a subsequent need item in the matter of Camp Carson versus City of Carson under pending litigation. There is no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, we have a representative from LAUSD, and I know he's on a time constraint, so could he come forward, please? We're gonna go by order just for a moment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Andre Spicer. I'm the Region South Superintendent, responsible for 210 schools, including the champion Carson Colts. It's a pleasure to be back with you all. This is a homecoming for me, as you know. I started my career here in Carson, and I was a Carson resident for over 15 years. I taught at Curtis Middle School for 14 years. And it's a pleasure to be back serving the students of Carson and the families. So I just want to reintroduce myself and reiterate how dedicated Region South is to the success of every child in the city.
Thank you so much. And tonight on our agenda, we have a resolution on bullying. I'd like to meet with you and the staff, but there is a resolution on our agenda item tonight, because we have some concerns about bullying in our schools. And we're doing a resolution, but there's a call out to meet with all the top levels and some of the principals in Carson.
Well, I'll share your concerns, and I look forward to meeting with you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And welcome back home. Item number two, to my Carson family, we're gonna hear from our captain of the Carson Sheriff's Station, because he too has to get back and take care of our city. Carson, Captain Jones from the Carson Sheriff's Station.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, all the council, City Manager, his entire staff, and to you, the residents of City of Carson. I just have a few updates from the station since our last meeting. A couple of things we've been involved in, and things the deputies have done. We had our memorial run, just to pay homage and remember those families and those officers who've paid the ultimate sacrifice. So we were so happy to do our memorial run and be able to support them. We supported and went out to a resource fair at Starbucks, just to go out and hand out some information and show another opportunity to partner with one of our community partners. Our community relations staff went out and visited one of our local Girl Scout troops, and it was a good outing. They were able to just remind those young women that they are someone, to help build their self-esteem, just remind them that they have the world at their hands, and they could be anyone, and don't let anyone tell them they can't be anyone. On the 24th, we had our coffee with the Carson event, with the help of Prevailing Ministries, and so it was so good to go out there. We had a great turnout from our residents, as well as some other people in our city and other businesses. Lot of good conversation, and we learned a lot from some things from the residents. The team went out, we helped support IKEA, they had their 30th anniversary breakfast. I was like, wow, I didn't realize IKEA's been in the city for that long. So it was really good to go out there. Got some cinnamon rolls while we were there, and so it was a good time. We're lucky and happy to announce we had two more explorers graduate, so our explorer pool is growing, and we're happy to bring those young people in and just help them grow in life and learn how to become young adults. This morning, we, in partnership with ARCO and Marathon, we supported the Special Olympics Torch Run event, a very good event we had over at the refinery off of 223rd and Wilmington. So the team was very happy about that. We're really excited. We had the privilege a couple of years ago with Mayor Protem to do it, but we're really excited. Coming up, we're gonna be doing a game changer event with Dignity Health Sports Park. And the good thing about this event is we bring folks in throughout the community, other law enforcement agencies, and we talk about perception, we talk about behaviors and outcomes, as well as it gives us the opportunity to just, as law enforcement, come together with the community and hear how we together can work to mitigate issues that are going on, help our youth intervene, and just be a good role model and example. So we're looking forward to that. On the 24th of this month, as we know, all throughout the country, catalytic converters are being stolen, and our team has always been doing things to educate folks and get things out there. We will be doing a catalytic converter etching event, and that's where you can come down, get your license plate or VIN number etched into the catalytic converter, which will help us identify if yours is ever stolen, so we can hold that suspect accountable, because we know we will have a victim there. But in addition to the catalytic converter etching, we're also gonna be doing a car seat event, so folks can come down, we're gonna make sure car seats are installed safely. We're gonna be out there, and the team is looking forward to that. I had the privilege, you know, as we all know, fentanyl is hurting our community all over, so I did a two-minute PSA fentanyl message that went out. It's all on our social media platforms, and I talked to Margie, I think it's gonna be going out on the city's social media platforms, as well as their YouTube channel. So we're happy about that. As you guys know, you guys do invest a lot into public safety, so one thing I wanted to share with you guys, when the deputies are out there, they're not just taking reports and moving on. Our detectives are doing the follow-up, as well as making sure, we're trying to keep the streets safe. So detectives did a warrant two weeks ago. We had a saw with a deadly weapon, as well as a criminal threat suspect out there, who was pillaging and hurting some of our residents, and they did a warrant, and I wanted to share with you guys. He, that warrant produced 14 weapons, various weapons and rifles, two ghost gun conversion kits, and over 1,500 rounds. So they were able to bring that in. I actually have a little photo I'll show you of some of the weapons that they brought in. So that's a few of the weapons that... Yeah. So that's a few of the weapons that the hard-working men and women of Carson Sheriff's Station that you pay for are out there doing, because they not only wanna go check the box, but they believe in what they're doing, they really care about their community. That's all I have for my report. Just thank you for your support, and the men and women of Carson Sheriff's Station. Any questions, I'll meet.
Well, Captain, I really wanna thank you for the outstanding job that you're doing, and I, did I miss the fact that you had apprehended two suspects? Did I kinda sleep on that?
Yes, we did. I mentioned it, yeah, we did, two weeks ago. We apprehended the two suspects involved in one of the homicides we had in our city, so we're happy about that, and...
Well, let your deputies know, on behalf of a grateful city, we are just so happy that we were able to take these criminals off the street, and we're just excited and pleased that our Carson Sheriff, you're homegrown, and you care about this city, because this is where you grew up, and I just wanna say thank you for all of your hard work. Whenever we call, you show up, regardless of when it is. Sometimes we work you around the clock. So let it be known that we appreciate you very, very, very much. Comments from my colleagues?
Madam Mayor, I just wanna applaud our captain, he does an amazing job, and I'm gonna do the game changer event again this year, and I think it's a healthy dialogue between community and law enforcement, to talk about what ways can we come together to identify certain issues in our community, and the way that our young people are approached. Every person with a hat on is not a part of a gang. Every person with a hoodie on their head isn't out to rob you. So how do we mitigate and respond to certain things? So I'm excited about doing the game changer event again this year, so I'll see you there. And I think more residents, I don't know how they get invited, but I know it's a group of people, but maybe we should talk about hosting something like that on the City of Carson level, opposed to just being invited to this think tank together.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor? Captain, again, thank you for coming out tonight. We really appreciate your reports, they're thorough and they're informative. So I have two things. One is, a number of my neighbors on 219th Street in Carson have had their catalytic converters stolen, and other reports were made and so forth. But could you give the date again of the event for the etching of your driver's license number on the catalytic converter? Because that's really important. If that converter is stolen, it makes it much more likely that if the culprit is apprehended, that you could get the catalytic converter back.
Yes.
And hopefully your insurance would pay for putting it back in. So what is the date of that? And it is a free event for everyone, right?
It's free, it's June 24th, and just to keep things decent and in order, as well as be respectful of folks' time, we're trying to ask folks to schedule times and sign up, so they can look on our social media site, or they can call the station at 310-830-1123, and ask for the Community Relations Office, and we'll happily schedule them to come in, and so that we could be efficient and timely and get their catalytic converter etched and get them on their way.
You're gonna do it in the same place you did last year, a few years ago, or...?
Yes, right out here, in the community center parking lot.
Okay, between the station and the Carson Community Center building, in that area?
Yes.
Between the, okay, great. And the second thing is, basically a message to everyone in the audience tonight. Captain Jones is our de facto police chief. We contract for our law enforcement with the County of Los Angeles, so we don't have our own police department, but we have the best law enforcement agency in the country, in LA County Sheriff's Department. So you might want to feel free to shake his hand, and he is basically the de facto police chief of the City of Carson. You wanna turn around and smile to your constituents?
Thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Can't be shy on this chamber.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Rojas, and then Councilman Hicks.
Yes. Again, thank you for all the work that your team does, because it does take teamwork. And, you know, bridging the gap, the relationship between law enforcement and the community is necessary, and it's important. And then we could start in this room, you have Carson High School students here, so yes, everyone here, talk to your captain, talk to the officers, when you see them out in the street, when you see them, you have coffee with a cop, right? Feel free to say hello and wave at them, and thank them for their service, because that is important, and it is necessary in order to thrive in a community. So thank you again so much for all the hard work that you and your team does for the City of Carson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanna say thank you to you, Captain Jones, and the team, for getting those guns off the street. You know, today they had another mass shooting in another city, around high school graduation, so whatever we can do to alleviate that possibility in this city is always a great process. And I just wanna say to all of you guys, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Let's give our captain a round of applause.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a report from, is Chief Bennett here, or Representative? Is Representative, come on down.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, thank you for having me. I'm Chief Munoz, in place for Assistant Chief Brian Bennett, here to give you our status or stat report for the month of May.
Thank you.
Thank you. We had 18 fires that we responded to in the City of Carson, 595 rescue emergencies, eight hazardous condition calls, eight service calls, 167 good intent calls, 27 false alarms, and two special incidents as well. Along with that, and that was just in the month of May, all were successful and completed. On the community service side, we did, we do have our Explorer program up and running in the, at Station 116 in the City of Carson, across from Dignity Health Sports Park. That's open for youth, ages 16 to 20 years old. Open enrollment will begin in August, August to September, and that is something that's open to all the youth here in the City of Carson. It's been successful in the past, it's been a way to expose the youth to the fire service, and hopefully get them in when they're 18 years of age, or a little older, once they're, if that's the path they choose to follow. With that, I thank you, and I'm open to any questions that you may have of me.
Thank you for that report. My colleagues, you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
So, thank you for that report.
Yes, sir.
Regarding to Battalion Chief. Do you do outreach to Carson High School for your explorers and people that might be interested in firefighting and EMT service?
That is something that we can definitely offer. We can offer a form of a career day, we can have our engine companies attend the school event, and also relay the Explorer program to the youth in Carson. That is something that I will handle myself and put it on the calendar for the coming week.
If you do that, that'd be great, because it is a great career for people that, young people that are compassionate, they wanna serve the community, and they wanna make a big difference in the lives of many, many other people. Being in the fire department is a great career. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I will handle that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you very much.
Because we do have an audience full of our young athletes, I'm gonna move up item number nine, because I know you guys have to go home and do some homework, right? Yes. Or do you...
School about to be out.
It's the last week, the last week of school.
School about to be out.
Is school out?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Friday's the last day, Madam Mayor.
Well, this is my gift to you, I'm moving up item 19, because I know you have something to do, if it's not homework, you have something to do. And before we move up that item, I just wanna say, to Carson High School, you made history. You have done things that other classes that were graduating from Carson High School could not, or did not do. They've all, you guys have always had a successful sports program, but this is phenomenal, to have championships, winning divisions, in all of the fields, track and field, softball, baseball. Awesome. Let's give our young athletes a round of applause. You are our future, and you're here tonight because the City Council wants to say, congratulations, job well done. We're looking for bigger and better things from you, because you're the one that makes the difference here in the City of Carson. Anyone that does not take care of their young people, shame on them. We invest in our youth, and we invest in our seniors, and those in between also, but I am, as the mayor of the city, so proud of what you've done. I know you've done it on the field, but I also know in order for you to be on this team, you have to have a certain grade point average. So congratulations on maintaining that grade point average that kept you eligible to play, because that is very important, this education is the key. And just thank you. Frank, thank you so much for bringing all the young people out to visit with us tonight, so we can recognize them. And on the 29th of July, when we do our street parade, we wanna invite all of you back to participate in the City of Carson's street parade. It's our 55th, we're celebrating our 55th anniversary of the City of Carson, and we do wanna highlight you again at our street, at our street fair, Councilman Hicks? Our street fair that Councilman Hicks is running lead on, so if your schedule allow, I know some of you will be going off to college, congratulations to those that are going off, but if you can make your way back home. For July 29th, we'd love to have you. I think the program starts at 12 o'clock?
11.
11 o'clock, right here in front of City Hall, we're having a street fair, and we want all of you back, so we can recognize you again. But I am so proud of what you've done, not only on the field, but in the classroom also. And before I, we come down to take pictures with you and give certificates out, I wanna give my colleagues an opportunity to say something also, and then we're going to the, handing out the certificates, thanking our coaches, and thanking our parents. That's your village, it takes a village to raise a child, and you should thank your parents for supporting you, you should thank your coaches for supporting you, because oftentimes they are your parents when you're at school. My husband coached about 20 years at Carson High School. My daughter played basketball, she was all American softball player and basketball player, so Keisha Andrews was at Carson High School, so she's a Colt, and I'm a Colt mother. And my husband was a Colt coach. Thank you. Councilwoman.
Yes, congratulations, Carson High, and I myself, class of 1984, Carson High School. It's Colt love, yes, yes, yes. So, is, yes. Is your principal here? Diana Fatai, is she here, the principal?
No.
Okay, no, she's not here yet, but congrats to her. She and I are class of 84, so delighted to still be part of the community. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you to your parents, and a great future ahead for all of you. Congratulations again, thank you.
MPG. MPG.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate the mighty Colts, class of 1997. Mighty Colt. Colts produce wonderful things. So you guys have a future at your fingertips, you guys are doing a great work, you guys are doing great, so I wanna encourage you, keep on being great, keep on achieving, and take it to the next level. So you guys are an amazing group of young people, scholars in the making, doctors, lawyers, whatever you wanna be, you can be all of that, because Carson produced some great people. So just wanted to congratulate my fellow Colts, 97, some of y'all probably wasn't born then, but I was four when she was in high school. Congratulations to the Carson Colts.
Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, Carson Colts, you guys always do outstanding things, you know? I'm a father of a Carson Colt, my daughter graduated in 2019, so a little bit younger than the other two on the other end. But if you notice, you have a lot of individuals sitting up on this dais that's connected to the Carson Colts, to Carson High. And understanding you guys are part of a legacy that's getting ready to start as you go on your journeys in your life. You're part of that fabric, you're part of the tapestry that makes Carson the city that it is. And to all of you, I just wanna say congratulations to your family, to your coaches, for putting their time to actually be with you guys, and to help you through your process. But again, you did the work, you did the efforts, and you made it happen. Congratulations.
Councilman, do you?
Thank you. My connection, of course, is a classroom school teacher. I taught at Stephen White Middle School full-time, and that was in the 90s, folks. And then I got elected mayor...
I was four.
And became a... You were four then? I think so. And, Madam, were you in my class? No, just kidding. But in all seriousness, I also concur with my colleagues on the dais here, that we are very, very interested in your future, we're interested in you becoming successful. And basically, I want all the people, the young people, all the students to know, all the adults in this room are interested in your success. We want you to be successful people. We want you to live your dreams. And going to Carson High is a great start. I know many, many Carson High graduates that have become very, very successful in various endeavors, from some sports to science to politics, like these two down here, right? And, you know, it is really important that you care about yourself. If you're on a sports team, you obviously care about yourself, you care about your teammates, you learn how to work together, and you learn that in order to be successful in life, you should help other people become successful. I believe that's God's intent for all of us, to spend our lives helping other people become successful. So I still substitute teach once in a while. I retired in 2016 from the school district, however, with the shortage of teachers, the way it is nationwide, including in Carson. How many of you are graduating, or seniors? How many of you are seniors? So, less than half of you. All right, well, you may run into me then, and when I cover your teacher's class as a guest teacher in the future. So again, I'll, I wanna say, you have our support, we want you to do well, we know you will, and congratulations on your championships and every task that you complete. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gotta shout out Frank Saldana and JR Redman.
To our city photographer. Oh, it's not on? Oh, don't forget my pink mic. We're gonna take a quick photo before we call everyone up. So put on your happy faces, okay? Happy faces. It stays on? Happy face. We're gonna turn. We're gonna take one group picture of the, yes. No, we're gonna kind of stand. Coaches, coaches, coaches. Shh, shh. Frank, could you bring all the coaches and alumni association up? We're gonna take a quick shot of the entire group. All right. Where do we need to be? Where do you want us? Councilmember? Everybody stand up. The, uh, everyone stand up, okay? Everyone stand up. We'll get a big group shot.
We'll see. Yeah, that should be good.
Be careful, be careful.
Okay. And if you guys, so we can see you in the photo, my, what I say is find your window.
Let's move back a little bit.
So find your window between people. If you can't see me, I can't see you.
Shh. We like your inside voice. Listen to the photographer. Okay?
If there's any, like, shorter people, like, really, really shorter, just make- make your way to the front. There you go. There you go on that end. Go ahead and make your way to the front, shorter people.
Inside voices, look at you guys. Come on up. Bring that big trophy. Bring that big trophy. Oops.
And if everyone can kind of bunch in with each other. Coaches.
Everybody, listen to the photographer. Listen to the photographer.
Coaches, coaches.
And we're gonna do a group shot. Okay.
Coaches, can we guys, have you guys circle in the back here? Can we have you guys, coaches?
Jawan can hold that. Hello?
I was just trying to, I, I think they did it. Maybe the people on the sides who bunch in. Yeah.
Okay, if you, if you're on the sides, if you're on the sides, I need you all to scoot in just a little bit more so we can get everybody in the photo. If you scoot in just a little bit more.
Yeah, go in the back.
Or you can go in the back because you'll be seen. And don't block my mayor. Okay, if you can have everybody look up at the photographers, the videographers. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Can we have you duck down? Okay, ready, right here.
One, two, three.
Beautiful, big smiles. One, two, three. Okay, let's do a fun one. Say yay! Okay, looks great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone. You can go to your seats. Carson baseball team, Marine League champion. Carson baseball team. How are you? Look at you! How are you? Good, hanging in there? This is a Carson baseball, back-to-back, shh, back-to-back Marine League champs, uh, two thousand twenty-three open division championship, champion runner-ups. Woo! Four years, four years. Oh, wow. I'm gonna let you say all that, Colt. Oh, you brag? Well, I want you to brag. No, we want you to hear from you also. So I'm gonna just read one certificate. They all say the same. My councilwoman will read off the names unless you want to do it, but it says, "And, um, to the city of Carson, California presents certificate of a recognition, in recognition of your achievements and continued commitment to sports and athleticism. Congratulations to Carson High School Boys Baseball Team winning the back-to-back Marine League Championship and the two thousand twenty-three Open Division Championship runner-up. Wishing you continued success on your future endeavors is dated today, the sixth of June. Signed by your mayor, Lula Davis Holmes, our mayor pro tem, Jawan Hilton, councilmember Cedric Hicks, councilmember Jim Dear, and councilmember Arlene B. Rojas." We're gonna call your names up and then we're gonna do a group shot, okay? Woo! Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. Josiah Agredano. Josiah Agredano, is he here? All right, come on, come on. Not here. Okay. Joseph Barber.
Joseph.
Aiden Brasher. Danielle Cabral. Diogo, Diogo Gallegos. Johnny Garcia. Come on, okay. Noah Gomez. Ryan Camacho. Andrew Joquez. Andrew. No? Okay. And Daniel. Okay. Dylan Mahrez. Matthew Marquez. I'm gonna go quick on this. Isaiah Martinez. Joshua Montez. Jonathan Munoz. All right. Ivan Munoz. All right. Jonathan Oloke. Skylar Phillips. Skylar, no. Jaime Casada. All-stars. All right, congratulations. Oscar Sandoval. Adrian Vera. Oscar. Adrian. All right. Seth Zalameya. Jeffrey Zavala. Anthony Dorado. Michael German. German. Jalani Parker. Joseph Duarte. The head coach, Steven Monqueros. Assistant coach, Josh Cole. Assistant coach, Chris Duffy. Assistant coach, Michael Konipo Aguirre. Assistant coach, Justin Gonzalez. All right. Assistant coach, Damian Lopez. Okay? Congratulations to all. Congratulations to all. We're gonna take a photo. We're gonna listen to our photographer. Take a knee. All the coaches up.
These are athletes. They can do it.
Thank you, thank you.
Call me. Okay. Give me a call. The, okay. I, okay, the next up will be the boys volleyball team. I'm gonna ask Councilman Hicks. L.A. City selection title, second consecutive year. Yeah.
Mies Ablian.
Mies, you wanna do it? Okay. All right. Congratulations to all. All right. It says, "In recognition of your achievements and continued commitment to sports and athleticism, congratulations to Carson High School Boys Volleyball Team for winning their second consecutive victory as the L.A. City Selection Division One Champions. Wishing you continued success on your future endeavors and school. Dates today, June sixth. Signed by your mayor, Lula Davis Holmes, mayor pro tem, Jawan Hilton, councilmember Cedric Hicks, councilmember Jim Dear, and councilwoman Rojas." And we're gonna give her the honors of reading these names one more time.
All right. Okay. First one. Mies Ablian. Jason Hernandez. Genesis Morales. Kayne Cassaway. Kane, Kane Cassaway. Donato Green. Derek Cadiz. Andres Harrell. Andrew David. Lance Alon.
Lance.
Jason Sahagun. Lance. Jason. Jason here? Okay. Julian Toledo. Christian Zamodio. LJ Justo Niano. LJ. Angelito Hanzon. Lakobo Manai. Manai, no? No.
He's not here?
No.
He's not here. What's your name?
Oh, he's here.
He's here.
All right. This way. Stay up here. Russell Gallion.
Russell. Ooh, be careful, Russell.
June Bonifacio. Dre Tuau. Rainier Poyahoun. Rainier. All right. LJ Romquillo. LJ, yeah. And John Barron.
Hi, John.
Are my coaches here for this? The coaches are here? Come on down, coaches. Come on down. Okay. Head coach, Jeremy Molazarte. All right. Christian Remi, Remigio. Assistant coach, there. All right. Assistant coach, Alan Zalea. Not here, not here. Assistant coach, Greg Veracruz. All right, right there. Okay. Are we good? We're all here? We got another photo up. All right. Congratulations. Coaches, come on down, coaches. Coaches, uh, we don't have any. Okay.
This is track and field. This is the people that were.
I'm standing behind you. Don't move until I move, okay?
Oh, wait a minute.
I'm gonna put on my pink. I'm, I'm the real deal here.
I'm the real deal here. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Uh-oh, uh-oh. Yours if they don't claim it. Uh, the Marine League Softball Varsity Team. Wow, come on, alright. CIF L.A. City Section Open Champions, CIF Southern California Regional Semifinalists. Wow, ladies! Alright, ladies. Varsity at that. How many of you graduating? Three? Oh, it's only one here? Okay, are the coaches here? Coaches, come on down. Coach, I'm gonna have you to read their names because I have to apologize because for some reason, and I don't know why, I don't have my certificates for my coaches. But we will get them to you, so I'm gonna give you some work to do, okay? Alright. And it says, "In recognition of your achievements and continued commitment to sports and athleticism, congratulations Carson High School Girls." Say it again, Girls. Softball Team, winning the Marine League Championship, CIF L.A. City Section Open Division Championship, and the CIF Southern California Regional Semifinalists. Wishing you continued success on your future endeavors. Is signed by your Mayor Lula Davis Holmes, Mayor Pro Tem Jawan Hilton, Councilmember Cedric Hicks, Councilmember Jim Dear, and Councilwoman Arlene Rojas. Let's hear it for the girls, yeah! Okay, Coach.
Malia Espino.
Congratulations.
Riley Garner.
Riley. Is this Marina Green's granddaughter? Is this Marina Green? Marina worked for us forever. She retired. You're beautiful, just like your mom, and we just valued her service. Where's Marina? No, that's mom back there. She worked for us too, grew up in the park.
Ruby Greheda.
Ruby. Congratulations.
Um, she's not in attendance, Alana Langford. Our CIF Player of the Year, Rihanna Manlupet.
Are you coming back another year? Alright, absolutely.
Allison McCarthy.
Allison.
Our Marine League Co-Pitcher of the Year, Giselle Pantoa.
Co-Pitcher, alright. Congratulations.
Vanessa Perez.
Vanessa. Twenty twenty-five.
Uh, she is not in attendance, Alyssa Pumali. Zania Puny.
Zania.
Another one of our pitchers, she is not in attendance, Alexis Rodriguez.
Alright.
Lolitu Simi. Ashana Lee Tietelli. Uh, she is not in attendance, J.D. Ventura.
You missing two?
Uh, she is not in attendance, Priscilla Villarreal. Uh, Alyssa Villanor.
Just call her name and give the phone number, we will change it.
Uh, Gigi, can you come up?
Hi, Gigi.
We'll replace hers.
Yeah. Give me that one.
And they tell me Rudy is this year's CIF Coach of the Year. Let's give it up for him.
Stay up here with us.
Rudy, stay up here with us. Thank you very much. Congratulations again, ladies. Thank you. Are the coaches here for the girls and boys track and field team? Where are you? No? Oh, I hear you saying Frank, that's Frank. CIF L.A. City Selection Title, eighth... Eight, listen up. CIF L.A. City Selection Title, eighth straight title. Via the one hundred and two hundred and anchoring, the four by four, four by one hundred relay. Marine League First Place Winner, is that you Frank? Ay, co... Get out of here. Awesome. JR. Our own. Frank, Frank, I'm gonna put you to work. Come on over here and read these names off. I'm gonna, it says, "In recognition of your achievements and continued commitment to the sports and athleticism, congratulations on Carson High School Track and Field Team winning the Marine League First Place and CIF L.A. City Selection Championship. Wishing you continued success on all your future endeavors is dated the day the sixth of June. Signed by your Mayor Lula Davis Holmes, Mayor Pro Tem Jawan Hilton, Councilmember Cedric Hicks, Councilmember Jim Dear, and Arlene B. Rojas." Thank you so much, and you know we will get you your certificate, don't you? I want you guys to thank the coach for getting in contact with me and making sure that this happened, and he sent us all the names of all the teams. So thank you, Coach, for helping the city recognize these young people today. Thank you.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes. JR.
So why don't you introduce the first one? I think you have some special information on, on maybe some world records that, that was passed. So why don't you share that with us?
I'm gonna just say Rain Redmond. Thank you. Okay. Jaya Wespe. Eva Walker. Samira Stevenson. Lauren Williams. Mia Jimmerson. Teaja Fan. Kaitlin Williams. Jasmine Cannon. Christina Gray. Craig Walker. Jaden Rendon. Cameron Hurst. Gerald Evangelista. Avant Jackson. Louis Chukwu. Mia Jimmerson.
Are we missing anyone? Kyla Hyatt. Kyla.
Tiffany Williams. Keon.
Okay.
Yes, we're good.
We're good, congratulations. Ladies? Kak? Kak Lee. Get the names of the people that we don't have a certificate for, okay? A couple of you have certificates that don't have your name on it. Kak will get the correct names. Kak, Kak, raise your hand. If you have a certificate that doesn't have your name on it, see Kak. We will make it happen and get them to you, okay? Oh, he, oh, okay. Who doesn't have, that's anyone, boys or girls, track. We wanna make sure everyone has a certificate. Thank you, congratulations, everyone. If I missed anyone, see Kak in the back. If we missed anyone, Kak, raise your hand so they can see you. Do we get all the teams? Did we get all the teams? Who is this one? Cal Water, are you in the house? Cal Water, Ralph Felix, are you here? Ralph, come on down. Ralph Felix? Carson High School, you can stay, hang out with us. Congratulations, Carson High. But thank you to the coaches, we'll see you all on the twenty-ninth. The twenty-ninth. Carson's Women's Club, we haven't forgotten about you. Okay. So if you wanna hang out with us, feel free to, but if you wanna leave, you can, you can... You can leave, feel free to leave. Thank you, parents, for bringing everyone out tonight. Congratulations again. Thank you so much. Hey, little Mike. How are you? I watched you grow up. Joseph, but I said little Mike, I know. Let's, we're gonna take a quick photo with someone while we're getting Ralph. Come on in, hon.
Nice meeting you, thank you so much.
You too.
Thank you. Yes, yes.
I do remember you.
Ralph Felix. Huh? All right, congratulations.
Coach, give me a call. You know how calls, Lady Hall gives, okay? Oh, yeah. Yes, it is. Thank you, thank you.
I used to work for Mayor Wellington Webb for eight years in Denver, Colorado, and I worked for President Clinton.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm such a fan. Can they come in?
Sure. Real quick, real quick.
Real quick, come on, boys. Come on, boys.
Please.
I promise. I'm the community representative of Carson now.
Please. Thank you. Ralph, in the house. Hi there. And Angie, hi there. Hi there. Quick, quick. Okay, we got, quickly, we can't, we can't do individual shots, ladies. Because, okay, I'm not gonna be able to do individuals because I have to get on with my council meeting.
Angels.
Come on, my little track star. Hurry, hurry, my little track stars.
She's a runner, she's a track star.
Congratulations. Ralph Felix, come on. Oh, Lord. Hi there. Big guy.
How you doing, man?
I'm fine, I'm fine.
You guys know Angie, everybody know Angie?
Of course, we know Angie. Angie. Which one is that, uh, Ellen?
Here we have a certificate of recognition presented to Ralph Felix in recognition of your remarkable leadership as the district manager of California Water Services and your notable dedication in garnering support for the California Water Affordability and Infrastructure Transparency Act to give Californians more insight into their water bills and require California water providers to submit infrastructure investment and customer bill data. Signed this day, June 6th by our mayor, Lula Davis Holmes, council member Cedric Hicks, council member Jim Dear, councilwoman Arlene Rojas, and yours truly, Mayor Pro Tem. Let's give it up for Ralph Felix. He's also receiving one on behalf of Cal Water that essentially says the same thing.
Perfect. I just want to thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council, residents of Carson. It's a pleasure to serve the community here in Carson. What I've come to recognize is that the residents here really, truly care about their community. And I'm proud to, to serve you guys, serve potable water. And not only serve potable water, but more importantly, serve the community that we work in. And that is very important to myself. Angie Gilbreth, who was our government affairs specialist. I cannot do it without her. But more importantly, the support of this council. I came into this district six years ago and started a relationship with each one of them. And it's been very positive and productive. And I'm very proud to say, I, I work in Carson and I support Carson. So thank you very much.
Ralph, before Ralph was on the water board, we did not have a relationship. We, we never, he came, he met with all of us and he's built that relationship. And I just want to say thank you for reaching out. And whenever we call, he responds. I called him one day, he was in the doctor's office. He texted me back, I'll get back with you. That's how dedicated he is. So I just want to thank you for everything you've done and, and the relationships we've built here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Saturday is Filipino Independence Day celebration. And I just wanted to present this to our councilwoman. Yes. Maraming salamat. Because we will be there and I'd like you to present it at the Filipino Independence Day celebration on Saturday. I'll be running a little late. My grandson is graduating. That's a congratulations. So I, I decided that we would present it here to our councilwoman and to thank her for her hard work and working with the Filipino community in presenting this. I think it's the, what, 100 and?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. And it says, whereas on June 10th, 2023, the community of Carson will celebrate the 125th anniversary of Philippine Independence Day. And on this occasion, it is appropriate to recognize and commemorate the contributions of Filipino-American citizens who have made it, who have made to our nations, contributions they have made to our nation. The Filipino Act of Declaration was proclaimed by the Filipino Revolutionary Forces of General Emil Agüinaldo. Agüinaldo, on June 12th, 1989, in the town of Cavite, Cavite? Cavite al Viero. Known as? Kawit. Located in the Philippines province of Cavite. It established the sovereignty and independence of the Philippine Islands from Spanish colonial rule after the American and Filipino Revolutionary Forces defeated Spain in the 1980s during the Spanish Revolution. And I'm not gonna read all this because I know you're gonna read it all on Filipino Independence Day. But it's today. Whereas today, they are approximately, approximately, approximately 4.2 million people of Filipino-American descent, many of whom have played a vital role in the development of the United States and have paved the way for Filipino-Americans to continue to strengthen their roles in a broader society and to contribute to America and California politics, economy, and culture. The city of Carson is proud to recognize the following Filipino-American organizations in our community. The Filipino Community of Carson, Filipino Independence Day Foundation, Southern California Allied Neighborhood Estrato or Batu? Batong Malake. Foundation. All right. Cayo Mangi Lions Club, Dreamers and Visionaries of South Bay, the Fleet Reserve, Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce, Los Angeles, and the Confederation of Filipino-American Association. Amen. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of Carson, California, in honor of the multitude of contributions that the Filipino-Americans have made to make this a better country and state for all people, recognize 125th anniversary, anniversary of Philippine Independence Day on June 12th and call upon all the citizens of Carson to observe the month of June with appropriate ceremonies, programs, and activities. And we want to invite you all out to the Filipino Independence Day celebration, which will be held at Veterans Park, located on 223rd and Moneta. So if your calendar will allow, please go out and celebrate this. We celebrate all the national, different cultures here in the city of Carson. And we are proud of our Filipino population. So it's dated today, June 6th. Signed by your mayor, Lula Davis Holmes, Mayor Pro Tem, Juwan Hilton, council member Cedric Hicks, Jim Dear, Arlene B. Rojas, attested to by our city clerk, Cleo Bradshaw. Thank you, madam. Thank you, thank you. Maraming, maraming salamat sa ingyong lahat and to the entire Filipino community of Carson, ran by our Elito Santorina and the community and all the volunteers. We thank you for celebrating the Philippine Independence Day, 125th anniversary of Philippine Independence Day. So Saturday, we will see all of you Saturday at Veterans Park, 8:00 AM, at the flag ceremony. It'll be a great day. Thank you. Salamat, mabuhay. And it's gonna be a great day. Thank you all. Maraming salamat. And the following week, the city, I said we celebrate everything. We just love to celebrate the diversity that's here in the city of Carson. And on the 19th is Juneteenth. The city of Carson made it a national holiday. But you know, the city of Carson was celebrating the Juneteenth celebration long before it became a national holiday. We started at Stevenson Park. We started at Stevenson Park when I was a supervisor on a, with the support of then-councilwoman Rhonda Frank. And we have been celebrating. So people that are doing Juneteenth celebrations, they need to come with the city of Carson because we're always, we're always the front runner on all, all of these events because we understand the importance of celebrating our heritage and our culture. So could I have the Martin Luther King Club, please come down? And I'm gonna ask that our councilman Hicks read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the city of Carson, we want to bestow this proclamation declaring June 19th, 2023 as Juneteenth Day of Observance. And whereas Juneteenth is a national celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States, marking this year as its 158th anniversary. Juneteenth commemorated on June 19th, 1865, when Union General Gordon Granger read federal orders in Galveston, Texas, that all previously enslaved people in Texas were free. Whereas although the Emancipation Proclamation had formally freed slaves almost two and a half years earlier on January 1st of 1863, through the passing of the Emancipation Proclamation, Texas was the most remote of the slave states with low presence of Union troops. So enforcement of the proclamation had been slow and inconsistent. Whereas Juneteenth is a time to reassure one another, whereas through prayer and gathering of family members and friends, it continues to be highly reverenced celebration for all of the United States with a range of activities, but almost always focused on education and self-improvement. Whereas today, Juneteenth Celebration celebrates African-American freedom and achievements while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all cultures. This year, Juneteenth has taken on a more national, symbolic, and global perspective. The events take place in Texas are not forgotten for all of the roots tied back to June 19th, 1865, from which a national day of pride is growing. Whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Joe Biden declared Juneteenth a federal legal holiday. A, a number of states also recognize it as a state legal holiday and most states honor it as a day of reverence and observation. Whereas on Saturday, June 17th, 2023, the city of Carson joins the nation in commemorating Juneteenth at Mills Park. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Carson, California do hereby recognize June 19th, 2023 as the 158th anniversary of Juneteenth and urge all residents, government officials, educators, and other institutions to recognize this situation and significant day in America's history and to mark this month with special ceremonies, activities, and programs. Attest today, the sixth day of June, 2023, signed by the entire city council.
I want to thank Mayor Lula Davis Holmes and, and all the council representatives. I want, would like to say that Martin Luther King Democratic Club actually celebrated, we didn't actually celebrate, but we got to celebrate 50 years last year. And our founder, Quincy Beaver, he was actually, we celebrated his birthday in, last month, 27th. 101 years old is what he would have been. He would have been. Yes. And he's celebrating in heaven right now. We're celebrating with him, okay? So I was just, I just want you to know that we do appreciate the city of Carson and the support. And I want to also just identify some of those strong members. Roy Love was a prior, former president who actually marched with Dr. King. You know, and a lot, and so we're really, really proud of him. Mary Lee Jones Caulfield is the glue that keeps that, keeps this club moving and operating. Okay, and then we have Jerry Shepherd. She's been that treasurer. And we've had Vicky McKinney, that has been there a while. And then I'll, I'll point out over there, Jim Dear, who was there with Quincy Beaver and Geneva Phillips while they were getting things moving and going. And I think he's still trying to get something going with the statue here. So we appreciate all the support. We love you, we thank you. God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, thank you. All MLK Club members, come on, get in the photo.
And this is our vice pres, vice president. Thank you. I had, I had to make sure you, you saw him lying there.
Thank you. Little hug. Thank you. What you need? Come on, Connie. Thank you. Next, we're gonna have a proclamation to be presented by Councilman Hicks, National Men's Health Month.
Testing, testing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We need some air in here. My curls are dropping.
The city of Carson is going to recognize the month of May as National Men's Health Month. And I just want to say to the men that are out there, your health is important. I know I do a prostate cancer wa? What did I say? June, I'm sorry. It's the heat, June. Heat stroke, no. That June is the Men's Health Month and that understanding that we need to take care of ourselves and we need to make sure we always take care of ourselves from the, from our mental ability, all the way down to our physical ability. Whereas National Men's Health Month is a congressional health educational program celebrating across the country in the month of June with screenings, health fairs, and other outreach and activities. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women. Let me say that again. Men continue to live on average of five years less- Men continue to live on average of five years less than women, with American Indians and African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. Whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from diseases. Whereas men have an education about the value of that preventive health can play in prolonging their life role as productive family members will be more likely participating in health screenings. Whereas fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and have happier, healthier children. Whereas during the month of June, 2023, Men's Health Month will focus on a broad range of men health issues, including heart disease, diabetes, prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. Whereas the citizens of Carson are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and a medical checkup. And whereas the month of June is an open opportunity to educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventive health practices. Now therefore, the mayor, city of council, the city of Carson, California, do hereby proclaim the month of June, 2023, as National Men's Health Month and observe this month with appropriate programs and activities to heighten the awareness of preventable health problems and encourage early detection and treatment of diseases and injuries nationwide and worldwide. Attest today, the 6th day of June, 2023, and signed by the entire city council. Who's gonna accept this is our staff person who represents our new program that we have in our city. It is called Nurtureng Fathers Program. It is every Tuesday at Anderson Park from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. And its program is rooted in fathering, managing anger resolving conflict, nurturing of our children, fostering and fathering our sons and fathering our daughters, disciplined without violence, balancing work and fathering. And want to make sure that we have this program and it's in place. And I just want to bring up Dr. Jimmy Kirby.
Yeah, I definitely do. All right. First of all, I want to thank Madam Mayor. I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem and the city council members. Appreciate that. And I also want to thank the nomination. I'm honored and humbled by the nominee being nominated for this. The nurturing father is best described as a man who actively provides guidance, love, and support to enhance the development and growth of children for whom he cares. The Nurtureng Fathers Program is a unique 13-week course that aims to help fathers unearth and enhance our innate nurturing abilities. The program is structured to provide 90-minute classes that teach effective techniques for maintaining positive family relationships and promoting optimal child development. The Nurtureng Fathers Program is about more than just an exercise in intellectual ways of knowing and parenting. We give equal credence to emotional ways of knowing and the unique benefits fathers gain from being in activities that nurture our children. The intangibles I'm talking about here, such as feelings of joy, confidence, and overall sense of well-being, which definitely connects us to Men's History Month, Men's Health Month, excuse me. We cover self-care, benefits, taking time to meet our needs. Exercising regularly is one of the things, the topics that we cover. And eating consciously, mindfully eating, I'm talking about here. Listening to our bodies, respecting our bodies, and going to the doctor, as Councilmember Hicks alluded to earlier. The incomparable joy that we get from playing and laughter. These are things that fathers aren't typically known for, right? Playing and laughter with our children. And we practice relaxation exercises. I'm a yoga instructor, so we always gonna get that in, such as breathing, meditation, and body movement. I also want to thank the Department of Human Services for providing me with this opportunity and encouraging me to take on this task. I'm honored, and I want to thank everybody involved, particularly Danny Cook and Amanda Valerosi and Janice De Guzman. I appreciate everyone here. I thank you all for listening, and have a beautiful and safe evening.
I think that concludes our presentations for the night. Well, thank you, everyone. I have to exhale. But before we get back onto our agenda items, I want to, as the mayor of the city of Carson, in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, I want to thank our NPC Communications for providing the sign language during tonight's council meeting. Thank you so much for providing this service to us. I was just informed he's a Carson resident. She. What's your name, sweet? Hi, Ronnie. Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna go to item number 10 now because it's important that we get an update on our City of Carson Small Business Growth Academy. It's hosted by the city of Carson in conjunction with Cal State University Dominguez Hills. And this is our second class. We graduated. And if you watched my first state of the city address, this is one of the initiatives that I wanted to put forward. It's been a success. They graduated their second class. And in the fall, we will be starting our third class. And it's to educate and train and inform our small businesses on how to succeed in their business. So thank you, Doctor, for coming out. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members for having me. You just said it all. I feel like I should just sit down. We're very honored that the Innovation Incubator at CSUDH, as well as the College of Continuing and Professional Education are able to put this program on. It's, I think, a testament to the Town and Gown event that took place a little over a year ago, I think it was. But it's really a chance for us to collaborate as a university and as a city with the small businesses. As a quick reminder, we had eight companies in our first cohort. They did phenomenally well. And we got to bring them to you several months ago before we started the second cohort. This time, we had 22 companies that made it through the whole program. We're very proud of them. We've brought several of them here. And, you know, when we, this program, this idea of taking the community and bringing the small businesses in and really helping to incubate them, instead of focusing solely on large, scalable ventures, you know, that are designed to take over the big tech companies, instead focus on those small businesses that really are the engine of a lot of the local economy. And so this innovative approach, supported by all of you, has really been something that I can say on behalf of our program, we're very thankful for your support and looking forward to. September 8th will be the next cohort. One thing I would like to mention is the camaraderie that these companies build over 10 weeks. It's been likened by one of the teams to being in a boot camp, right? Where you come out the other end of a boot camp and it's like we've gelled together. And as a result of that, they have, they've requested and we're honoring the idea of a monthly gathering of all the alums to get together and just have a coffee. And we had our first one last Friday. Talk about the issues that they're facing, help each other out. And so this is the beginning of, I think, a real, a real organic growing of the local businesses. And so we appreciate your support, and we're very excited to continue growing this program. With your blessing, I would love for each one of them to be able to give you 10 to 20 seconds about their experience. Would that be okay with you? So I don't have an order for you guys. This isn't class, right? So if you'd like, come on up and just maybe do one at a time, give a quick testimony of how it went. Come on up.
Can I ask not just for a quick testimony, but make sure you tell your business, tell your name and your business and all that stuff.
Right there.
Okay, cool. You gotta use the mic, though.
Yeah, because you'll be on camera if your face turn, yeah, if you speak in the microphone, you'll be on camera.
Hello, my name is Denise Willoughby. I am with Plants of Hope. We are planting seeds of hope for the hurting using succulent plant arrangements and inspirational notes. The Small Business Growth Academy has helped boost my confidence and opened my eyes to unlimited possibilities. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council.
Hi, my name is Ray Aldridge. I'm the owner of Expressions To Wear Custom Screen Printing. And I'm probably the senior member of the second cohort here. I've, my company is Expressions To Wear, as I said. We've been in business for 38 years. And basically, I took the course to update my marketing skills because when I started the business, there was no internet. There was no computer. There was no any of that stuff that they do today. So I took the course to basically bring myself and my company into the 21st century, and it has done that. So I really appreciate, appreciate all of you for making this happen. And also Cal State Dominguez Hills. I got my master's from Cal State back in 1979. So this was a complete turnaround for me to go back to school to bring myself up to today's standards. So thank you again.
Hi, and I'm trying not to get choked up here, but my name's Tina. I own Carson Easy Wash. We're your local laundromat next to Dunkin' Donuts on Main Street. And, you know, COVID was difficult for small businesses, and particularly me. Not, it was special, but the reinvigoration that this class brought to just get energized again and enjoy, you know, working the business. I can't thank you all enough for sponsoring this. It really has changed not only the business, but my entire outlook. So thank you, and thank you, David. Fantastic program. Please, please keep doing it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kiana Kid Goines, owner of Collab Dance Studio and Creative Space. At our business, we create community through collaboration by providing a home for small businesses, entrepreneurs, and organizations that don't have a brick and mortar to operate out of. I am a two-time alumni of Cal State Dominguez, and so I'm very thankful for this opportunity to return to my alma mater, thankful for the council, and also to Cal State Dominguez for providing a space for small businesses to come together and network and learn about each other and share experiences and trials and tribulations. To be able to build a network and a community to grow is very hard to be a first-generation small business owner and to be around like-minded individuals that you can share that experience with has been a blessing. So thank you, guys.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Monique, owner of Contented Nail Parlor. The program, the cohort, was absolutely phenomenal. Some days was intense, other days was easy, but we definitely did learn a lot. I can go on and on. So I'm just gonna end this with a thank you. Have a good night.
Good evening. My name is Chioko Owens. I am the proud owner of Moonlight Bath Treats, where we make organic skincare. My store is located on the corner of University and Avalon. I want to thank Cedric Holmes for nominating my company. He's rubbing his hands because I gave out body butter at the Cedric Hicks. Oh, at the graduation. What the program has done for my business is that it has allowed us to participate in events here at Carson. So I was recently invited to the Health Fair a couple of weeks ago. And then I was also invited to Madam Holmes's Women's Health Expo in October. So that is something, those are opportunities that I didn't have before. And because of the program, it has improved my marketing skills. So I recently was invited this Saturday for KJLH's Women's Health Expo. So we'll be a business there. So I thank you all for nominating me, for supporting me. I am a Carson kid. I graduated from Carson High, class of '94. I went to Carnegie Junior High School, and I'm a Carson resident as well. So I also want to thank my family. I brought all my kids, my husband, everybody, my father. And then also, I want to thank Kat, my moon sister, who also supports. She comes and checks on me at the store. Some of you have been there. Councilman Jim Dear, Councilman Hicks, Jawan Hilton. You guys have signed my wall, so I'm waiting for you, Arlene, Madam Mayor. I'm nervous a little bit, but one of the things that's special about our store, am I taking too? Okay. One of the things that's very special about our store is that we offer refills. That's what keeps our customers coming. So because, you know, we are a little expensive, but to get you to come back to get a bang for your buck, we offer refills at 50%. So if you, I consider us to be the organic version of Bath &amp; Body Works. So I make body butter, I make sugar soap scrubs, body wash. I also make natural cologne perfume. And then I offer refills at 50%. So then that way, you have something that you like. Instead of buying a new jar, you just bring that jar back to us. And we refill it at 50% as long as you have your container. So that offers, and I learned with the cohort that that was actually a good business move to make because I see, I retain customers, and I see you all every 30 to 45 days, right? So, so again, come see me. We're located in Carson on the 651 East University. I'm in that corner in the back. I know you guys are gonna do something about that. I've been talking to you guys because you can't see me from the corner. But I'm near Crown Drug Store, and I brought business cards for you all. Everybody always gets on me. Do you have business cards? And I do. So I'll start with you. And thank you all again. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
She's a fireball, have you noticed? So I don't want to take up any more of your time other than to say, the small businesses, the 30 that we've worked with, if they represent the small businesses of Carson, we have an amazingly unique city here. They are phenomenally well gelled together and connected. And we're really thankful, on behalf of all of them in the university, thank you for your support in this effort and allowing us to really help grow those businesses and help them thrive in this community. Thank you again.
Thank you. Doctor, first of all, let me thank you. And I also want to thank my colleagues because when I came up with this idea, I didn't know how successful it's gonna be. And JR, thank you for what you've done to make it a success. And I reached out to David Gamboa when I was meeting with all the chamber members. And I said, this is an idea that I have as one of my initiatives. And how can you make this become a reality? The city council voted to fund it, and you took it from there. And I just want to say thank you because these students, the businesses, and when I go to the graduations, I think you have, what, 35 in this second class?
Yeah, we ended up with 22 companies.
Okay. The first class was about 13.
Yeah, it was a little small, about eight that finished.
Okay. So we are touching Carson because, you know, the small businesses here in the city of Carson is what make this city the city that it is. And I just want to personally thank you for your dedication and your service and to Dr. Parham for allowing you and the city of Carson to do what we're supposed to do. I always say, put your money where you I always say, put your money where your mouth is. And I think with us having this Small Business Academy is an example of the city of Carson putting their money where their mouth is. So thank you very much. And I look forward to that September, is September?
September 8th will be the next one.
Will be our third class.
Yep.
Thank you.
I, I do have to say, there was a special request
Yes.
from two of them. Can they get a photo?
Of course. That was gonna be my next request, that we all go down again and take a photo. After my colleagues have comments, then we all go down, councilwoman.
Yes, I just downloaded it and I, I won a free-ish. Yes, so I, I'll be going there to claim my prize. Thank you.
MPT.
I was gonna say to all of these incredible business owners who are active in the community, you guys are doing a great work. And I know that sometimes the grit and the grind of being an entrepreneur sometimes gets frustrating because you're the one beating the pavement. You're the one believing in your dream. I see all of you guys running up and down my timeline and all that stuff. So it's an incredible thing. If I could give you this word of encouragement or wisdom, your price is your price. It's non-negotiable. They don't negotiate it in, 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 in high-end stores. Certain stuff never go on sale. Your price is your price. And you, your price is your price. And those who can, will. Those who won't, won't. And those who won't sometime complain. So just go ahead, your price is your price. And, and be cool and confident in your price. You've been making it this far. So there's a market out there for that price. So your price is your price.
To Moonlight Bath, if you hadn't given me so many products in my little gift bag, I would have been there. She's given it to me twice, so I, I'm out. So I will be visiting you, but you, I appreciate it and I love the cream. It is awesome. So thank you. But I'll be back, cause I have, I've been saving it. Council, Councilman Hicks.
To all of you guys, I was at the graduation, I think it was the second or the first. I can't remember which grad, it must have been the first graduation I was at. To see some of you guys, and I know that when you guys had to do the, was it a one-minute presentation of your business? To see you guys do that one minute and kind of struggle a little bit, but you got it in that one minute. To see you guys today is like a total different, totally different person. Because you're more confident, you know your product, you know, you always known what you were selling. It's just having the ability to express it, to get it out to people, to let them know what you're doing. And I'm just saying to all of you, congratulations, continue doing that. If you have other friends, tell them about this cohort. Do not keep it to yourself. It is something that I know that the mayor had put in place, but it's something that I've always thought about. As far as our small businesses are the backbone of any community and that's how things happen. And if we can't get our small businesses up and running, we're just lost. We're just doomed for not having anything in our community. But to all of you guys, congratulations, continue doing the good work. And again, I'll be by each one of your places. Don't worry about it. I got your numbers. Thank you.
Councilman Dear.
Yeah, I just want to say, I want to ditto my colleagues' comments. I won't repeat them. Taking a, a class like this shows your determination to be successful. And, you know, statistically, most businesses in America only survive a year, maybe three years at the, at the most. But by getting the knowledge and the skills that you get from this, this class at Kelsey Dominguez, you're gonna go a long way and be very, very successful, I'm sure of it. The idea of having a business plan, for instance. You know, it's amazing the businesses that start out without a business plan. I don't understand that exactly, but they do try and, and this is why they often don't succeed. But you will succeed. So when is your, your culmination? Or have you had it for this class already?
We've had it for the second cohort. We do it in the 10th week of the program. So we'll make sure an invitation gets out for each one of them.
So you're starting the third cohort now?
Yeah.
And when will that culminate?
So we'll, that'll, the final day for that will be November 17th. It'll be in the morning on campus as well.
Make sure you invite all of us. We want to show our support for the businesses in Carson.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask my colleagues to join us down to take a quick photo. To the Carson's Women's Club, you're under all communications. If someone wants to speak on that, that item is under consent, but I will pull it. I'm gonna pull you up next as we get to that. So I know I see representatives from the Carson Women's Club. Okay? Who's gonna, whoever wants to speak, feel free to when I, okay, thank you. You can speak under all communications, but I had planned on pulling that item for discussion. Item 22. Yes. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You did everything. Yes, we did. We made friends. We're gonna go back to our calendar. All communications for matters listed on the agenda. If you want to speak now, Carson Women's Club, please come to the court. All communications for matters listed on the agenda. Is that's item number 22? Feel free to speak on it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I also have comment cards.
Comment cards?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All communications, you want to read those first?
No, just the, just the names. You want me to call the names?
Yes. What do you have? Former Mayor Protem Julie Ruiz Raver, come on down. For items listed on the agenda, you're gonna be speaking on item 22?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. Hi, Sunny. I'm Julie Ruiz Raver, former Mayor Protem of the city of Carson. And the Carson Women's Club was established in 1968 and incorporated in 1969. And we started out with community service. We were the first hostesses to assist and host the original founding fathers of this city. So we started out with community service. And the first, we, we helped them by serving them refreshments and food, something to eat, to give them endurance and strength to fight for incorporation. And the first city council proclaimed us to be the official hostesses of the city. And I joined the club in 1972. And I'm very fond, and, and the Carson Women's Club means a lot to me. And I have been president twice. That's how much I care about it. So anyway, I'm asking you to please support item 22. Because this year, we gave, and all the other years, we've given a lot of funding, awarded young students who live in Carson and go to other schools, but they have to reside in Carson. This year, we gave away, we awarded these young people, deserving students, $17,000. So with this, with this item on the agenda, it really helps if you support it because that will allow us to have enough funding to continue to serve these young people. So please help us so that we can continue our community service. Thank you.
Thank you. Loretta Graham.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Loretta Graham Gay and I am the Carson's Women's Club Scholarship Chairperson. I've been the chairperson for three years now. And I've been a member of the club for about 12 years. And I am really, really enthusiastic about our scholarship program. We were able to award 21 scholarships this year. However, our budget is very, very tight. And we would like to be able to use the facilities without having to spend additional money for rental and also for the food. We would like to be able to get this, a discount, you know, from the city by being sponsored by the city. And for years, we, we got this. However, all of a sudden, the last two years, it's been a problem, you know? We were told that things have changed and we can no longer be supported the way we were in the past. So I'm hoping that, and I'm asking, you know, everyone to please vote yes for the number 22, that we can continue supporting our students like we have been for over 50 years now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna pull that item from this consent calendar. Oh, you want to speak on it, Connie? Come on up, Connie.
Good evening, everyone. It's about time I have to say this personally. Congratulations, Madam Mayor Lula Davis Holmes, Members of the City Council, for all of you and your successful leadership, commitment, dedications, and unmeasurable community spirit in and out of your public duties, which has been accomplished together, also with your staff and the administration. Our great and prestigious city of Carson did start in making a way historically to be a well-known, not only in the South Bay, but throughout our nation. We're so proud to live and to do business and raise our great, great grandchildren here. It's truly a diverse city to be happy, enjoy, and meet all ethnicities in the world. Tonight, my warmest heartfelt gratitude to our officials and members of the city council. To be also the members of the Women's Issue Commission, which Carol is our, our chairperson. I would like to express my own personal observations, to mention just a few personally myself. Through generous efforts and members of the city council and the mayor, just to look outside day and night, our city hall was shining and so vibrant due to all pure efforts to make it. Landscaping in the city hall and round few areas were magnificent. Artistically redesigned and modern touch-up. And also, when you walk through the civic center hall, was very unique, was a very unique and presentable. It's a homey and conducive to socialize. The bathrooms were fantastic. Next. Also, I've been a reader, a regular, more or less, observations of the Carson Regional Communities, Community Service Guide and contents were very informative, educational, and motivational. Best design color in harmony and even, you know, the drafts and contents were really commendable. The brochure of events was, was on, were on rock, were, were organized. Many resolutions have been implemented. I'm here to say thank you for all your efforts. God bless. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And this is.
Brian, did you want to speak on item 22 or is it? No item? It's, okay, then, no, that's non-agendized. I have William Coons. Yes.
Hi, I'm a longtime resident of Carson, William Coons. And I'm, I'm here to speak in favor of item 35, which is the anti-bullying policy. So the only thing I would like to see is the, whatever is the repercussions, I'd like to see that strengthened. I'd like to see also apply it to the parks and the community center, like everything. As a child, I was bullied. Mostly because of my name. I was, I was considered Coon. My last name is Coons with an S, but I was called a Coon and I recovered from that and lived with it for many years. And when I was older, I took it on as a nickname. I said, my football, when I was on the football team, the, the people all called me Cooney. And that was the name I took up and that were my friends. They, they knew they could do that. But this bullying thing is a big thing, along with mental issues. I'd like to see us do something about that because the mental issues are a big contributor in the gun problem. So I'd like to see something go on there. When I was older, moving on, when I was older, I took up beekeeping. I was a 14-year-old beekeeper. I took care of honeybees in a 4-H project. And a few weeks ago, I saw somebody that got severely stung because they didn't know. So it's a little of education. Honeybees are very reticent of doing stinging. They only do it when they feel threatened. And so if a honeybee comes around and lands on you, the best thing you can do is just freeze. Don't move at all. And usually, they'll land on you and then fly away. So, so the worst thing you can do is swat at them. Try to kill them or swat at them. Because also, when you hit one, the, the smell makes other bees come. And then they will sting you, all of them. And a hive usually has 50, 100,000 bees in it. So you're talking about a lot of bees coming out. They're not all workers, but they come out and sting you. So the best thing to do is freeze. And then when that bee flies away, or, or if he's circling you, just again, freeze. Stop your motion and then back away, back away. And, and you'll find it, it works every time, or 90% of the time. The third thing, so that's a little education. The last thing I like to see, I'd like to see the city do something in, for AEDs. These are the automatic defibrillators. We need more availability. 12, only 12% of, of the.
Madam Mayor, that's three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, thank you very much for your comments. I'm gonna go because we only have four items. Imani Washington? Are you here? Washington? No. Brian Raiber?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the city council. Good to see all of you. And the reason I got up is because this is a very famous day of infamy, in my, in my opinion. Today is the anniversary of the assassination of Bobby Kennedy at the Ambassador Hotel in Los Angeles. Julie and I happened to be there that night because we supported Bobby Kennedy. And I think when his assassination changed the world to what we have right now today. I think if Bobby had have been, uh, had not have been assassinated, I think this world would have been a hell of a lot better place than it is now. So I just wanna say, just don't forget that Bobby Kennedy's day is today. Thank you very much and God bless all of you.
Thank you. Is, uh, June Aglipay here? Is he still here or did he leave? He left? Okay.
Madam Mayor, Imani Washington is back.
Oh, he's back? Come on down, mister. How are you?
Hi, everyone.
You have three minutes.
Perfect. Uh, hi, I'm Imani Washington. Okay, hi, I'm Imani Washington. Um, lived in Carson, grew up in Carson. My mother did, my grandmother did. I went to New York a while ago. I've recently moved back and, uh, I'm here, excuse me, I ran up the stairs, to, uh, uh, thank Dr. Hilton for helping my family get into school. We were having some issues at returning. Uh, I'd like to also thank, uh, Carson High's, uh, principal and vice principal for making the transition easier, especially for the children, as well as, uh, just thank everyone for what they were able to do for my family. It's nice to be a part of the community again. Yet I apologize, I'm a little bit out of breath. Um, thank you again.
Thank you and welcome home. June, you're back?
Good evening, fellow council members. Madam Mayor, council member, and also city staff, city clerk, city treasurer. June Aglipay here from the Office of Assemblymember Mike Gibson. And of course, we wanna show you something. Of course, a flyer is going around right now as we speak. Uh, actually, this is coming from the Habitat for Humanity. And it's a acronym for HERE, called Home Ownership Education Resource Event. That's gonna take place on June sixteenth, a Friday, from six to nine P.M. at the Magic Johnson Park at nine oh five East Elsigan Boulevard. And of course, this is a June, a free Juneteenth homeowner, homeownership information event. And of course, in partnership with Ste- uh, Stephen, Senator Stephen Bradford, and of course, Assemblymember Mike Gibson, and of course, learn, just learn how you can become a homeowner. Learn more about the state-funded Cal Home Program, Home Ownership, Home Repair, and Home Buyer Education and Down Payment Assistance and more. So, um, there is a QR code to it. And if anyone wants a copy of the flyer, I'll be happy to pass it out to the audience. And that's pretty much, I can share it. Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. And with that, I conclude my PSA, Public Service Announcement, coming from Assemblymember Mike Gibson's office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Atkins. Non-agendized item.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Mayor, city council, Carson employees, thank you very much. I'm Sean Atkins. I am the Council Park Volunteer Association President. I've been on that board for over ten years, serving the community, um, fundraising, promoting, doing everything for the kids that we can in the park to help fund equipment for them, uh, sponsor kids that can't afford to play, uh, to help them out, to even help out families that can't afford fa- uh, meals during the holidays. We do a lot in that park and for that community. I come to you tonight because the associations feel like they're being casted as outsiders. Um, we're being treated as outside entities, being charged to use city equipment and things like that. I've ran, we've ran a successful car show for the last nine years called Classics for Kids. I come to you tonight because we do it every September and we're being made aware that we have to pay staff fees, permit fees, fees to use equipment and things like that. Something we've never had to do in the past. This is something new that's been implemented within the last couple of years. Um, we don't know why we're being treated this way or why it's even been implemented on the, uh, park associations, the volunteer associations, all of them. We, we've all come across this to where we have to pay these fees now. And we don't understand why, because everything we do in that park goes one hundred percent back to the children in that park, in that community, everything. My books are wide open. You're more than welcome to come and see what we do. Um, as I said, it's been a very successful car show for the last nine years. Um, it's called Classics for Kids. And we hold it the last September and Septem- um, the last Sunday in September every year. The last two years, we have not held it because of course with COVID and shut a lot of stuff down with my organizer that I work with. Um, time is crucial for us, especially to promote for this car show. I only have two and a half months left. We hold it the last Sunday of September. I come to you tonight because, as I'm saying, I can't pay all these fees. I can't pay up to three thousand dollars for staff and equipment fees and everything and not make a profit. Because again, all that money, one hundred percent of my proceeds go back into that park. It goes back to the children, for the kids, for baseball, softballs, soccer goals, whatever they need. E- even little programs we put on, like Mother's Day events, Father's Day events. You know, we pass out flowers for opening day, uh, uh, you know, when we opened up for baseball and everything. Um, I know we can't use the term fundraising in the parks anymore, but it is something that we do to help pay for what these children need and for what these families need. And it's very important to me. It's very dear to my heart. And this is why I do it and I continue to do it. And I will still do this, no matter what. So please consider it. I'd be glad to hear from everybody. Um, I've been in contact with Mr. Hicks.
Madam Mayor, that's three minutes.
Three minutes. Um, I wanna say thank you for bringing this before the city council. And to the staff, there is no us against them. I've been preaching that from this day for the longest. I'm from Parks and Rec. Councilman Hicks is from Parks and Rec. The volunteer associations are the lifeline of these parks. They volunteer their time and their talent free. I don't know if you know it or not, but all youth sports registration fees have been waived. A child that cannot provide, purchase a uniform, I was able to seek a grant. And that uniform will be waived. But the caveat is that they must work in the volunteer snack bars. I've given, we have, as a council, have given direct, direction that those snack bars are supposed to be fully stocked and ready to go during baseball season and that you should not be purchasing that equipment, that you are there to assist with the running of the programs at the park. We have never, and I don't know how this started, but I'm getting these complaints and I've said it before, we don't wanna run our volunteers away. You guys support us. You always have supported us. I've been, you've been there for ten years. I knew the, uh, the former association. Well, this call a, uh, snack bar, uh, volunteer association audit form. And all you do is turn in that form. Uh, I know our director, Mr. Whitaker, through the city, uh, manager and assistant city manager, could you come down to the podium, please? Because we should not be running our volunteers away. This is free labor, folks. This is what they do. This is what the city of Carson is about. The more volunteers you have on the park, the less crime you're gonna have in the parks. The less gang activity you're gonna have in the park. Uh, I remember, y- y- you're just there. You're the adults on the park. Uh, I remember when I was at Stevenson Park, you know who set up my cultural and black event? My volunteer association. They came because my staff was planned. They set it up. Didn't cost the city a dime. So whatever it is we're doing wrong, I would like, Mr. City Manager, us to go back to basics. I've heard this from several volunteer associations. You know, we took the purchasing of the uniforms and put it under umbrella. They became non-essential because that's what the volunteers like to do. The coaches like to sit down and talk about, uh, this is a uniform that I want. I can understand us having one vendor, but the coaches and the volunteer associations should be involved in that. And when you don't have volunteers on the park, sometimes that's the only thing a kid sees, is the coach when he comes to the park. The only time they are able to eat is when they go to the snack bar. Staff can't run those volunteer snack bars. So I am very glad that you brought this to our attention. I would, uh, strongly recommend that we go back to old school, go to the Parks and Recreation Commission, establish an ad-hoc committee, and you presidents tell staff what it is you'd like to see. Because there is no way in the world we should be running our volunteers away from the park. No way. Mary Patton, is that you over there? Mary Patton was the treasurer of Delamo Park Association for fifty years. She came diligently. She turned in the books. We're not, we have to go back to bases. And this, you're not the first person I've heard this from. Okay? And, uh, to the staff, there's the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'd like you to establish an ad-hoc committee from that Parks and Recreation Commission. Meet with all the volunteer association presidents. And to you presidents, you tell staff what you want. Then they'll bring it back to us because there are already guidelines in place. Whatever happened to them, I really don't know. But the more time and distance that we get in, the longer we let this get out of hand, you're gonna have no one running and we'll have staff doing everything. And that's not what this is about. It is not. I want you guys to, uh, come back into our parks. You coach our kids. You're there. It's for the kids. And if you're having a car show, I, I just don't understand how, uh, it's just beyond me that you're having a car show for our kids and you're being charged this kind of money. I, I just have never heard of this. I don't know, there's two sides to every story. I understand that might, but whatever the problem is, please fix it. Because, uh, fix it back to where we were. We have become so computerized and, and, you know, just, I just don't see the volunteers on our parks that I'm accustomed to. And I, I appreciate the time that you've taken to come and speak to us.
Thank you.
And, um, organize those other volunteer associations. Veterans Park had one of the biggest volunteer associations. Carriage Cr- Carson Park had the biggest park volunteer association. There was, uh, Delamo Park, Stevenson Park. I don't see them on the parks anymore because they don't feel wanted and appreciated. And that's what I've heard.
And we do feel chased out, honestly. You know, we feel like we're being outcasted and we don't understand why when we work in conjunction with the park directors and figure out what do they need, what do we gotta do, you know, how can we get more kids in here, more coaches in here? You know, we work in conjunction with them constantly.
Always have.
So, thank you.
You're, you're singing to the choir. You always have. I appreciate you coming to us.
Thank you.
And without going back and forth, uh, you're good?
You're good, okay.
Okay. Uh, does anyone have any comment on this? But I want our coaches and our volunteers back in the park. This is their program. This program is for the city of Carson. That's what we are. Before, we had a theater, we had parks. That's all the kids had.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Linda is the last person. Uh, is Navar? Are you here?
He touched on everything.
He, oh. Okay. Thank you so much for coming out and I'm glad you did come out.
Okay, can you get their, all their information? You got, I know you talked to him already.
The next item is, um, we did all, approved of the minutes from the council meeting on May sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Please cast your vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Items number twelve to thirty-one are the consent items.
I'm, will we approve consent calendar, Madam Mayor?
Second.
It's been proved and properly second. I would like to pull item number twenty-two, twenty-seven, twenty-five, twenty-seven, and thirty. Does anyone else wanna pull an item?
I'll pull item eighteen and, uh, twenty.
Eighteen and twenty? It's been moved, approved, this consent calendar with exceptions of item number twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-seven, eighteen, and twenty. Please cast your vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Item number twenty-two is the, I pulled this item because I'd like to hear from our city attorney. Uh, I had this item put on the agenda because we have, we've always waived the fees for the Carson Women's Club for their, uh, um, events that they have in the city of Carson at the community center. I know they have, host their monthly meetings there. We had it approved at one time in perpetuity and I was informed by our city attorney that we could not, uh, uh, someone, may not have been you, but, okay, I wanna know, how do we keep the Carson Women's Club for coming back and asking for fee waivers? Because there is an agenda item, uh, council, I mean, Mayor, former Mayor Pro Tem Julie Raiber, that says that you're to get that, the community center free. A previous council approved it and for some reason it stopped. But one of you had that agenda item, because I asked you to keep it forever. So please let me know what we can do so that we don't have to keep bringing this back. They've always had at least three events they're free.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if I could speak for, uh, the city attorney because she was out. Um, so this particular item, we had, uh, our city attorney, Assistant City Attorney Ben Jones. He had previously went through this. And so the item itself can move forward, but he's still trying to review and research the timeframe. Because I think that's what we wanted to confirm was the, there was some perpetuity that was involved. And so he wants to ensure from the request that you all made, um, that this doesn't have to keep coming back the way that you requested. So I think the idea, Mayor, if it's okay that, uh, this item can move forward as you requested, to be approved, but then if we need to come back to specifically speak to the actual timeframe, because he's not quite sure what that timeframe is. There isn't a, um, one of the conver- one of the ideas and conversations that he had stated that it could not go beyond a certain, he didn't believe past three years without coming back before you as a council. And so he just wants to confirm that.
Well, if we have to do it every three years and that's what we're thinking about, and I know you've contacted the Carson Women's Club to see which events they were interested in hosting.
Correct.
So this item right here could be amended for three years until we get definite clarification on it.
Right. And if there's any issues, we'll definitely have that outlined in the city attorney. Um, we'll be able to provide that specifically so we can provide that information to you all once he's completed. Unfortunately, he didn't have enough time to do the research from that, but he knew that it was okay to move forward, at least for this evening.
Uh, Madam City Attorney, would you be comfortable with three years?
Absolutely. I, I'm, I apologize, I haven't been briefed on the issues, uh, by Mr. Jones, but, um, I'm generally comfortable even going beyond three years. But let's go with three years so I can figure out from him what his concerns are before we change the policy.
Okay. Well, I would like to make the recommendation that these items that are listed on the agenda, they, uh, be approved for the next three years. And once you find out every, what we can do, bring it back ASAP, rather than wait for three years.
Madam Mayor, is that a recommendation or a motion?
A motion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion on the question? Here, non-cast your vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. For three years, right now, today, uh, if you've, your fees are waived for all these items. And also we will be looking into what we can do, but I know we stopped you coming back every year in two thousand eight, I think. Yeah, Mr. City, they paid fees. Yes, they'll get a refund, right? Yes. Well, that's what I'm requesting.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just, just to clarify, it's just the city fees, not the, not the catering fees.
Not the catering. It's the use of the facilities.
Correct.
Yeah, they have to pay for the catering fees. Uh-huh. We can't waive the fees for food now.
No cora.
Okay. All right. So for the use of the facility, Carson Women's Club, the fees have been raised with this motion for three years. Staff will be bringing back within the next thirty days, putting a timeframe on it, what we can do so you don't have to come to the city council every year. And I encourage you, uh, once we approve it, you keep this, uh, agenda item. And I encourage you, uh, once we approve it, you keep this, uh, agenda item in the file so that the next president will have. There is a copy of an agenda item already that you should have that was approved some time ago. I think Julie, you were on council. At that time. So thank you very much, ladies.
And Madam Mayor, I'd like to also comment because the Women's Club is officially, you know, hostesses, of course, back in, in the day. Hostesses was politically correct term, but you know, you're really valuable members of our community. And, uh, it's much appreciated, uh, the great volunteer work you do to make Carson even better. So we have a special relationship of the city and Women's Club and we want to maintain that. Thank you.
Most definitely. You guys are out, registration desk, Juneteenth, every event we have in the city of Carson, the Carson Women's Club is there. So I want to thank you for your service and we will talk soon. Item number.
Madam Mayor, I apologize. Um, item number seventeen, I know that you all, um, on the consent calendar, we actually need to push that item. Uh, continue it to the next meeting if that's possible. I, I know that you would.
Item seventeen?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we, we need to go back and revisit. I need to disapprove it. Item number seventeen is considered rescinding the replacing resolution number proving. Number two-two-two-seven approving the success, success of agency's memorandum of understanding.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion for reconsideration.
There's a motion on the floor for reconsideration for item seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second.
They're doing it. They're actually taking the right steps.
Okay, um, we cast your vote for reconsideration.
Madam, Madam Mayor, you can make a.
First you have to vote to.
You can just move to continue without objection.
Yes, uh, without objection, we're gonna continue item seventeen until.
June, June twentieth.
You sure it's June twentieth?
Yes, June twentieth.
Time certain?
That's correct.
Okay, unless, if you bring it back June twentieth, we'll say the first meeting in July, just to be on the safe side. Is that good?
It's not, it's not June second.
June, are you sure?
Yes, it's.
June twentieth, okay. Till June twentieth, date certain, date certain. Okay, thank you.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number twenty-five. Quick and dirty report, nothing major. Item number twenty-five is considered to accept the project that's completed. Project number seventeen seventy-one combined park improvement projects for Seal Pool, Dominguez Aquatic Center, and Hemingway Aquatic Center.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this item number twenty-five. Uh, on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, the city council awarded a construction contract to California Waters Development Incorporated for the construction of project number seventeen seventy-one combined park improvement projects for a total budget of one million thirty-two thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars. This project consisted of improvements of the aquatic pools and facilities located at Foyseia Park, Dominguez Park, and Hemingway Park. The contractor completed pool renovations, including the replaster of pools and decks, replacement of heaters and associated repairs at the facilities. These projects have been completed in accordance with the approved plans and specifications for your approval.
That was a quick and dirty. You have anything to add? I always like the, uh, residents to know that we are working in their area on, um, their particular facilities. And for Seal Pool, Dominguez Pool, we got, we should be, we want to be operational because summer's here. Uh, and so it's good to let our residents know without dealing with the consent calendar. We are taking care of some of the maintenance items that were at, at these facilities. You have anything to add, Mr. Director?
Oh, ma'am.
Oh, shucks.
I got plenty more that got pulled, so.
Okay.
He knows not to talk himself out of a sale.
So I'd like to move staff recommendation on that.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Please cast your vote.
Uh, the motion carries, Madam Mayor. Just making a note that MPT Hilton is absent for the vote.
Thank you. Item number twenty-seven.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. So item twenty-seven, uh, was the amended item there listed on the agenda. Uh, it was actually a, a smaller amount of money that was going to be needed as opposed to what we initially had, uh, requested. And so from that, uh, just a brief staff report, we'll have our Director of Public Works, Mr. Arlington Rogers, Jr., uh, pre-doctoral candidate, uh, provide this update.
Thank you, uh, Mr. City Manager. This particular item, uh, what took place with this is we provided an estimate for the, uh, staff report. Because we did not have a formal proposal from the organization. We did get that formal proposal on Friday. So we estimated that the additional cost would be about forty-five thousand dollars, but it's actually closer to twenty-five thousand dollars. So we just amended the staff report to add the reduced amount into the actual staff report. So that's what the change is.
Thank you. Uh, it's less than we'd anticipated. My question is, is this the same vendor?
Yes. Same vendor as the original?
The same one that put that Chevy, uh, baseboards around City Hall? The same one that had edges cut, upside down, crooked?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Why? He's, his work now is, is not satisfactory. I mean, the things that I pointed out, and I don't even know anything about baseboards.
Madam Mayor, if I can, if I can add, that typically anytime a contractor has those types of errors, they go on a punch list. These, those things that you've just pointed out, they're on their punch list. So they're still required to make those corrections. The change order, uh, request that's within this item is for additional items or additional, uh, line items work. That was not part of their scope. For example, changing some of the color of the carpet and a couple of other items. That's why you see the difference. They're still required to make the, the corrections that you've just highlighted, though.
Before we give him more money, why don't we let him correct all these deficiencies? Because his, his work is substandard. I'm sorry. Have you guys seen the baseboards and, I mean, we're giving money to.
Right, Madam Mayor. So I think, I think what, um, Dr. Lennox is kind of referring to is that even though these items are inconsistent or maybe even inefficient, on the punch list, we go back to them and then we advise them that this is what needs to be replaced or fixed, whether it be replanted or whatnot. So that has to happen. That's regardless.
Before we give him more money?
We could do that. However, I, I heard you saying, Mayor, I think what the request is, the reason why we're looking for more money is so we can finish up some of the items that we weren't part of the original scope that we came upon and we'd realize that we need to have taken care of.
Such as?
And that was kind of what Dr. Lennox was just sharing. Um, with, with some of the work, there's some, some services of the scope that needs to be repaired. Um, I don't know if there's specifics that you want to talk to.
Some baseboards, some toilet fixtures, and some carpet replacements. Some of the things that were added that were not in the original scope of work, that's what this additional amount is, amount is for. The contractor, uh, per the punch list, will not be able to not correct some of the things that you pointed out. But this money is for the additional work that we added upon the original scope.
He's already started that additional work.
Has he already started?
If I may, I, I think that what I'm hearing you say is you want them to correct the deficiencies. Because in a contract, you could deduct payment on things that they don't finalize and fix. So, um, maybe the authorization can be made, but it can be contingent upon, you don't receive this payment until you fix the deficiencies on the other items. So we can add that language in the contract to protect the city and make sure the deficiencies are made before any new scope of work is actually paid for to the contractor.
Paid for, I, I agree with that because you guys know what I've been, I've been showing it to you as. And I, just to take and give him more money, it sends a message that we're satisfied.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, you know, I saw what you saw and, um, I think what the staff is telling us is that they also solve the problems. And they are making sure that those problems get fixed and do not occur again. Um, I, maybe you might call it giving them a second chance, but actually it's a clarification and a, uh, and a certainty that this installer will do it right. And I think they're on top of it.
That's correct.
My request is that they complete the deficiencies first.
Okay, that's my request. Whoever makes the motion, if you're inclined to make a motion, say, make a motion to move staff's recommendation with the modification that the contract is to be amended to add language that says the deficiencies identified by staff and the council have to be corrected first before the new scope is actually, um.
Instituted.
Given and assigned to the contractor and the funding for that is released to be paid to the contractor.
Thank you for quoting that. That's my motion.
Second.
There's been moved improperly second. All in favor, signify by, oh, cast your vote, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Um. Item number eighteen, Councilmember Dear.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, item eighteen, uh, consider approving an agreement for contract services with, uh, Escribe Software Limited for Agenda and Document Management Services. Uh, I was looking at the staff report and I made some notes, so let me find what those notes are. So I get it accurate. Let's see. Yeah, okay, so, um, I just wanted to inform the community in general that, um, you know, members of the public. This is a, a really good improvement that the staff's come up with. I want to compliment the city manager and his, his staff. Because the, the old system, uh, had deficiencies, so to speak. And, uh, this is gonna make it, uh, much easier and more efficient, uh, for the city to manage first our council agenda and, uh, meetings, videos, documents, uh, the new software, Escribe. Replace the current system called Granicus. I remember when Granicus first came in, we had, I think, problems from day one. But I, I just want to, uh, ask the staff a couple of questions here. Uh, what is the specific, uh, go-live date for the new city council agenda software with Escribe? Because I didn't really get that in the staff report, so I just, I wanted to find out.
Sure, Dr. Lennox will be able to share that update.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Dear. Yeah, the software itself, once it's approved by council for the contract, we have a kickoff meeting with the, uh, consultant of the firm to go over a timeline. I believe what they told us, uh, in their proposal was that they would have at least a, a sixty-day transition. So we have to do a migration of our current platform, which is Granicus, uh, and make, make sure that that data is, um, uh, complete. And, and we have a, a sort of a record of everything we've done with Granicus before in the new system. And then, uh, within that next thirty, uh, thirty days or so, we do a training, uh, rollout with our staff so they know how to use the new platform. So it's about a sixty-day process all in so that when, you know, after that two-month period is done, we're using that exclusively. But that will also include training, though, for, uh, city councils as well because it integrates with what you all do as, uh, you vote on each of the items that show up on the agenda. It's a fully integrated system.
Good, because I think we all, five of us are interested in knowing how the system works. I don't think Granicus, when it first came in, was, um, explained thoroughly enough, but I think this will be. So who's, who's taking the lead in this? Who's the staff member handling the lead in this transition?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a collaborative effort with, uh, IT, the clerk's office, as well as, uh, city manager's office.
Okay, so there's not gonna be any interruptions in our, our council agenda, council meetings?
No, sir, there shouldn't be any interruption.
Smooth transition, guaranteed, right?
That's what we're hoping for, yes.
All right, all right, good. Well, I just want to be sure that the, uh, the program is user-friendly, uh, not just for the council members, but for the public. Uh, I want the public to be able to have access to the information, uh, about what's on our agenda and what, uh, transpires at the council meetings and so forth. So you know, that transparency is really important and, uh, I just want to be assured by staff that that's what the intention is and, uh, that we're gonna make that happen. Maybe the city manager or Mr. Lennox can answer that question.
Yes, sir. Again, we, we are gonna ensure that there's no lapse in service and that the, in, the intention of the new platform is to improve accessibility by the public, uh, so that that, you know, when they go online to look at our agendas, uh, it's, it's a lot easier for them to access any item, uh, submit comments for those. Uh, again, a fully integrated system, uh, that really, uh, really connects with each department and makes your experience as well as council members a lot simpler, uh, for every single, uh, item that comes before you. Uh, so, uh, that timeline is something we'll firm up. Um, we'd be happy to come back with an update, uh, to the council, either in a memo or even as part of a presentation, uh, just to keep you abreast of what's going on.
Okay, thank you. I've got all my questions answered. I appreciate that.
You want to make a motion?
That one, on a motion?
Mm-hmm.
The motion to approve?
Yes.
Staff recommendation.
It's been moved improperly second. Please cast your vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Item twenty, Mr. Councilmember Dear.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so item twenty, let's see. Oh, yeah, so, um, this radio trans, uh, communication, I think it's a great program. I'm really looking forward to, it, it's gonna enhance public safety. My question is about the, um, the sheriff's department. Are they gonna have, uh, access to this as well? Are we gonna be communicating with the sheriffs directly? Can you explain the, uh, interaction between the sheriffs and our public safety department?
Uh, sure. Thank you, Councilmember Dear. Uh, I'm gonna have our emergency services manager, Nora Garcia, go ahead and provide an update. So, and answer your question.
Press that green, green button.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. To answer your question, Councilmember Dear, yes, um, LA County Sheriff's Department will have access. In fact, that's something that we were still working through. Currently, we have just internal city, uh, staff on talk groups where, which is like channels within the radio.
Yes.
Um, however, we do have one designated for the sheriff's department. In addition, the platform that we migrated to, um, is P-25 compliant and it is LA RICS, which is the sheriff's department's platform.
It's called LA RISC?
LA RICS.
RICS?
Yes, sir.
Like R-I-C?
Yeah, LA dash R-I-C-S, LA RICS. Yes, so we're, um, actually very, um, proud of this project. We are the first, um, contract city with brand-new radios on this platform.
Oh, great.
So, yeah, excited, very excited, um, and, and grateful to you all as well, um, for the authorization to enter into the MOU with LA RICS.
So how many radios are we adding or purchasing?
So the first phase, we purchased a hundred and ten radios. This phase, we are purchasing a hundred and twenty, in which I do want to give a shout out to our public works partners who helped us make that purchase.
Okay, she, great, great job. To the city manager, to his, um, public works department. So the radios will be used by city staff only, right?
Correct, yes.
And, um, so I think you've answered my questions very thoroughly. I didn't see that in the staff report when I read it. Maybe I read it too fast because I'm a fast reader. But, uh, I appreciate you answering those questions that came to mind.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
You're welcome. And I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation on item twenty. Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Please cast your vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Item number thirty, thank you. Item number thirty, Mr. City Manager, quick and dirty report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we will have our Director of Public Works. Dr. Arlington Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Um, this particular one is a correction. And what took place was in February, the wrong dollar amount was put on the staff report that came before council. And so, um, that was two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. The actual amount, um, is nine oh four four fifty-five. So this is, uh, correcting it. So when we saw the, uh, mix-up approximately in March, uh, we got it corrected. So this is to correct that information.
That's MPT.
That's, uh, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Six thirty-two four eighty-nine.
Yeah.
What are these funds coming from?
Who was doing the adding and subtracting?
You want to?
$600,000.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council. Yep, this was presented to council. Although the staff report says $200,000 something, and the recommendation, but the actual contract itself that was attached to the staff report at the time was $904,000. So we're coming back to correct that recommendation to make it 904. What happened is this is for Carriage Crest Park project. There's two areas of Carriage Crest Park. One is the four-acre park, which is the existing parks, and then the other one is the ten-acre future development. The design cost was submitted by the consultant at the time as for two different, two different design. One is to design the future expansion for Carriage Crest Park and to design the existing, existing facility at Carriage Crest Park. But when, so that was combined in the contract, but then in the staff report, there was some oversight by the staff. They only put in the, the future expansion and didn't forget to include the, the improvement on the existing park. So now we're coming back to include the whole package to improve the existing and the future expansion for a total of $904,000.
So, the expansion is only $270,000?
That's correct.
The existing, where we had the dog park and we met and selected Plan B, the Cadillac, more or less, instead of the Mercedes, is $600,000.
That's correct. That's to demolish the existing and put up a new one.
And put up the new. Those plans have already been approved?
That's correct. There's a conceptual plan that was approved, yes.
Are these some of the funds that Council, Assemblyman Gibson had?
That's correct.
And what was the dollar amount on that?
I believe it's thirteen million dollars.
Thirteen million?
Total, yeah, that we have.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
That's correct.
But we didn't spend a million on that. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just have a question to staff. In looking at RJM, RHA, and then Gruen Associates, was this architect the lowest bidder based upon these firms?
Yes, they are the most qualified and the, apparently I understand that they're the lowest and the most qualified.
They were the most qualified, but not the lowest in cost?
That's correct.
Both, or?
Yeah.
And both, okay, okay.
And by the way, council, this includes design and construction.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure, since it was 271,966 in the beginning, but when it turned out to be?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's design cost of the existing and the future expansion, not, not construction. It's not correct.
Construction is separate than that?
Construction is separate, yes. I'm sorry, my mistake.
So this is just for the design only?
That's correct.
Okay. And they were the cheapest at 904,455 in the cost to do just the design of Carriage Crest Park? This is just giving us the design, the demoing of the building, the adding of the soccer fields, the new ball diamond design? I'm in the wrong field, okay, thank you.
They were, that's, that's staggering to me. They were the cheapest? What was the highest? Do you know what the highest there was?
Take it.
If they were the cheapest?
Hmm.
Design is expensive?
I don't have that info.
You don't have that?
Is this a time-sensitive matter? Can I ask you that?
It's in the process. It's a, it's a grant that we received from, from, I think, it was from Ogles and Prop 68, and also from Assemblyman?
Gibson.
Mike Gibson, yes.
Well, we just, I just want to make sure we're, we're calculating our dollars. I know we want to get that park designed and completed, and we've been talking about it for a while, but I was just concerned about these numbers, myself and MPT, we had the same number, that's $600,000.
It's my, it's my understanding that the money has already been allocated to 904. When the staff report was written, due to human error, only the 200,000 was carried over, not the 600,000 with it. So it was just a
Typo.
Huge typo, but it was, it's simply a typo.
Okay, okay. If you, everybody has that puzzled look on their face.
It's a big difference.
But we already approved it, is what we're saying, it was a typo.
Correct, we're just correcting the original staff report.
Okay, so we have no choice. I, I just thought my math was off, that's all. So, okay, we'll approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second, please cash your vote. Yes?
You didn't vote.
Oh, I didn't vote? Because I'm shocked.
The motion carries, Madam Mayor, there's one extension.
So that completes the consent calendar, am I correct, Madam City Clerk? What, what did you do?
It's a typo.
Yeah. Item number thirty-one, special orders of the day, item number thirty-two. Am I on target? I've been shocked. Item number thirty-two is a public hearing to consider substantial amendment to the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan. Madam City Clerk, has the notice been properly posted?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the notice of public hearing for the proposed community development block grant, substantial amendment to the city's twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three annual, and annual action plan. The notice of public hearing has been given pursuant to applicable law, including but not limited to proof of timely publication received by the city clerk. Yes. Posting requirements were met for the individuals and the organization. The posting affidavits are on file in the city clerk's office, and we did not receive any written communication for this item.
And no written communication. So, we're going to open and close the public hearing, Madam City Attorney. Open it, open the public hearing. Is there a report from staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item thirty-two, we'll have an update briefly about this annual If you give me one moment, Madam Mayor, I'm trying to see, I don't have my tabs.
Oh, take your time.
I'm trying to figure out which one it is.
We're going to take a two-minute break. Our city manager needs to get organized there. Hi, Said. We have two more minutes. You need more time?
Yeah, no, we're good, thank you.
You're good, okay.
Madam Mayor, so on November seventh, twenty-eighteen, the city council adopted resolution nineteen, eighteen, one-one-nine, establishing the City of Carson Community Facilities District number twenty-eighteen dash zero-one, CFD number twenty-eighteen zero-one, maintenance and services and future voluntary annexation areas with the formation of CFD number twenty-eighteen zero-one. Complete projects in the citywide future voluntary annexation areas are now able to be annexed into CFD number twenty-eighteen dash zero-one. This action would authorize the annexation of B eight. Oh, is this not thirty-two?
No, that's not thirty-two.
My book's all over the place, I don't have the tabs.
I was getting one of my glasses, because that didn't look right.
I said, wait a minute, I'm flipping here, it says.
Yeah, I can, Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to present item thirty-two.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, item thirty-two is staff proposing the amendment of the city's two-thousand twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan to allocate previously budgeted current-year CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, to increase the available funding for the Neighborhood Pride Residential Rehabilitation Program. As you're aware, those funding, that funding is provided by, through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and we do have Keith from our housing division here, who's available to answer any questions you may have. The recommendation, though, is to hold the public hearing, take any testimony, unless you, and ultimately approve the submission of the substantial amendment to the twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan according to HUD regulations.
Thank you very much. And are there, we don't have any applicants here, is there any public comment? Public comment? Okay, we'll close the public hearing then.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the submission of a substantial amendment to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorize the following reallocation of Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG, funds within the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three annual action plan. It's $220,000 exactly from Anderson Park Improvements to the Neighborhood Pride Program. Waiting for the reading, adopt resolution number twenty-three dash zero-nine-nine. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Carson, California, reallocating current year Community Development Block Grant Funds from Anderson Park Improvements to the Neighborhood Pride Program.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. I have just one question. I know you had to move it out because of time constraints, but at what point are we going to move the funds, get the funds for the Anderson Park ADA? I know we had to move them because of a time constraint, so I don't want that to fall through the cracks. You said, okay, you got it.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the Anderson Park ADA improvements are actually part of your adopted, approved CIP for the upcoming year, so that
For the upcoming year?
Correct. So that project will still move forward, just with different funding source.
Thank you. It's been moved improperly second.
Madam Mayor, under discussion. I also feel that it's important that we let the public know that the Anderson Park improvements are going to be paid for. It'll just be done maybe later this year or, or so, so it's not like we're not going to do it in Anderson Park. We are, we just need to allocate the funds now because of the time constraint, and that's a simple reallocation, and then, I don't know if backfills is the right word for it, but at least it'll, Anderson Park would be made whole, that's the intention. Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's been moved improperly second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
My concern, and I'm glad that my colleagues were on top of that, my concern is letting the residents know. I don't know, can we send a letter out to the, around Anderson Park to let them know that this is taking place so that they are not getting half-information? Somebody may have seen this entire council meeting and get part of it, and they turn around and tell everybody in the community it's not happening, they just took the money away from it. So, at least it's coming from us officially letting them know it's not dead.
Absolutely. We can draft a letter and we'll have it sent out on behalf of the mayor and city council.
That's also known as curtail a rumor.
Yes, definitely.
Sure, no, absolutely. We'll take care of that, and we'll have that sent out and reviewed by you all, and once you get it approved from you, we'll send that out.
Whose district is that?
That's in my district, D three.
That's in Councilman's district.
Okay. Thank you so much, please cash your vote.
Unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Item number thirty-three is another public hearing. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this is the item that I was apparently reading earlier, so, to save time on the, the numbers and the summary, I'll just hand it over to Said. That's why I kept looking at him. I could have swore you had CFD, Said, what do you mean you don't have it? So, apologize. So, thank you, Said.
Well, do I need to open the public hearing for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam City Clerk, was the notice properly posted?
Sorry, it's a lot of paper. Madam Mayor, be advised that the notification process beyond the Brown Act for CFD annexation is not required. So, in the case that I am asked to report on it, I can let you know that the property owner, B eight Alondra Industrial Owner LLC, did submit the unanimous approval consent letter to the City of Carson requesting for annexation into the City of Carson Community Facilities District number two-zero-one-eight dash zero-one, Maintenance and Services. There are no noticing nor publication requirements for this item beyond the Brown Act, so we're good to go.
So I don't have to open the public hearing, I can have a staff report?
Exactly.
Thank you. You look purple over there.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I would suggest you open the public hearing, even though it's not like the public has a right to provide comments.
Okay. Madam City Attorney, you concur, okay, okay. We're going to open the public hearing.
Thank you. This action would authorize the annexation of property located at one-twelve West Alondra and two-nineteen West Gardena Boulevard into CFD two-thousand-and-eighteen dash zero-one by unanimous consent of the property owner. The project includes demolition of two industrial buildings consisting of one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand square feet and construction of two new industrial buildings totaling about two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand square feet. The annexation will increase the revenues for the city by approximately $39,544 annually. That concludes staff's report.
The MPT.
I'd like to make a motion.
Wait a minute, are there any, I need to close. Applicant, there's no comments from the applicant. Did you read them already, Madam City Clerk? No? No public comment?
No, Madam.
The public hearing is closed.
Further reading and adopt resolution number twenty-three dash zero-nine-three, a resolution of the city council of the City of Carson, acting in the capacity as the legislative body of the City of Carson Community Facilities District, number two-zero-one-eight dash zero-one, Maintenance and Service, approving annexation, number sixteen, B eight Alondra Warehouse for property located at one-one-two West Alondra and two-nineteen West Gardena Boulevard, APN six-one-two dash zero-one-seven eight-hundred, within the future annex area, city council, and receive and file the unanimous approval consent letter from B eight Alondra Industrial Owners LLC.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second, any deliberation? Here, non-cash your vote.
Unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Item number thirty-four is a public hearing also, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For this particular item, I'll brief, read the staff report just for an update, and then we'll have staff to kind of go through a brief presentation.
I need to open the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Always. Madam City Clerk, was it properly noticed?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Notice of public hearing has been given pursuant to the applicable law, including but not limited to proof of timely publication received by the city clerk. Posting requirements were met for the individuals and the organizations. The posting affidavits are on file in my office, and we did not receive any public comments for this item.
We're going to open the public hearing. Could I have a staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This particular update will be provided by our revenue manager, just making sure she's ready, Ms. Christine Gagnier, and our deputy city manager, Tariq Ramani. For your, for tonight, Madam Mayor, cities charge fees for various services such as issuing permits, conducting plan reviews, and providing recreational activities like Zumba classes, which you all love. These fees help receive the costs of providing these services and ensure that the costs are borne by those who benefit from them rather than being spread across the entire tax base. Cities adopt fees to schedule, to establish fees for services and to ensure that the fee charged are fair, reasonable, and consistent. Fee schedules are updated periodically to reflect changes in the costs of providing services, changes in demand for services, and changes in state and federal regulations. Simply stated, setting user fees is equivalent to developing prices for establishing services. Unlike private organizations or businesses making a profit, in providing services to the public is not a legally allowable practice for local government. The city may set fees at a level to recover the full cost of providing the service. However, these are circumstances where the city council can these are circumstances where the City Council consider policies in establishing fees for certain services at levels that does not recover the full cost resulting in general fund, uh, subsidy. Uh, city staff recently conducted two fee study workshops for the City Council, which provided an in-depth look into analysis and fee recommendations by RCS. Each workshop gave the council members an opportunity to discuss the report and the findings, but also provide direction to city staff on implementation and approval of the fees. Tonight's public hearing is the chance for the community to address the City Council, and staff is requesting the City Council to approve the twenty-two-three Uniform Comprehensive Schedule of Fees, uh, for your, uh, review, as well as approval, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
At this time, if you would, Madam Mayor and Council, would like to have a brief, uh, update and presentation by Chris Gagnier, our Revenue Manager.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro-Ten and City Council, tonight's public hearing is the last step in the fee study and the fee adoption. After conducting the two fee study workshops, which occurred on March ninth and April twentieth, staff received valuable feedback and guidance, and tonight's agenda is item is a brief review of what's been discussed, and staff is recommending the council's adoption of the recommended fees. I'd like to introduce you to Eric Johnson, the President of RCS, who's gonna provide a brief presentation, staff is available to answer any questions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro-Ten, members of the Council, it's good to be here again tonight. I'm gonna keep this very brief, I know you've had a long meeting and, and have gone through a lot of items tonight, um, as you know, our, you know, the city contracted with RCS to provide a cost of services study. We met with, with, um, city staff over a number of months, and we developed the cost of the services that you are providing to the community. We have identified fees for many cases to recover those costs, we had work-study sessions to get feedback and direction from the council, we have prepared a fee schedule that represents that direction, and we're asking you to approve it tonight, and I'm certainly available for any questions.
Any public comment? No public comment, we'll close the public hearing, deliberation from staff?
Are you gonna slide through the fee study, or, yeah, just?
Oh.
I want us to prove it?
Before. Do you wanna do the slide presentation, or?
I wasn't planning on, unless, you've seen it before, um, I'd be happy to go through it if you'd like me to.
Okay, no, I was just, just wondering, I'd like to make a motion.
Second, oh, he has to read the motion.
I don't often get requests for a repeat. He didn't make a motion.
Actually, you know, before the MPT makes his motion, I do have a question, um, did you get any letters, emails, phone calls, personal contacts from the general public, uh, to your company or to staff regarding this process, and anything pop up as controversial?
Yeah, nothing from RCS.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, uh, we did not receive any, uh, I would say, a request or questions about the study after the public hearing. We did actually, months ago, when we did the first workshop, we received a letter from the Chamber of Commerce, and we had meetings with them, and we explained the methodology, and they supported, once they got the understanding, they supported the, uh, the study.
I see, okay, thank you, that answers the question very well.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Just to the staff, based upon the last, um, presentation that was done, were there any changes in the document, specifically that I know that we discussed at the last meeting, per your presentation? And I know that we went through it kinda line by line, I think MPT was kinda alluding to that, based upon, on the screen, so what specifically to, was actually changed?
So, to the report itself, there was no changes, that was the final report with the recommendations, but to the, the, uh, actual fee schedule that you are at, being asked to approve tonight, there was changes, there was four services that were asked to be subsidized, there was changes for those four services. For anything that had more than a fifty percent increase in, in the fee, that was going to phase in over two years, so on the fee schedule itself, there's a column that has either phased, or full, or subsidy, and so if it's phased, that's a phase in over two years, because it's an over, over fifty percent change.
Okay.
Full is, full, um, cost to, today, or sixty days from now, because it was less than a fifty percent change, and as I mentioned, there was four services that were recu- were recommended by the council to subsidize.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I did have an opportunity to review it, so thank you. MPT?
So I'd like to, wait for the reading, adopt Resolution Number twenty-three dash zero-nine-one, a resolution for the City Council of the City of Carson, to amend the twenty-two-three Uniform Comprehensive Schedule of Fees.
Second.
Been moved improperly second, any further deliberation? Hearing none, please cast your vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number, what is it, thirty-five? Consider adopting the anti-bullying policy resolution, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, tonight this item is on the agenda at the request of Mayor Davis Holmes, and transmits, uh, an anti-bullying policy resolution for City Council consideration, um, I know we'll like to, uh, provide this as a resolution, an updated resolution for, uh, Mayor and Council to, uh, provide and adopt for our, both staff, as well as, um, anyone who enters or provides any services within the city, whether it's volunteer, commissioners, committees, so forth.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, as a schoolteacher, I, I do see this as a continuing problem in our schools, and, uh, I wanna thank you for adding this to the agenda tonight, and I will, um, make a motion to approve, uh, staff recommendation that we, uh, you know, adopt the anti-bullying policy Resolution twenty-three dash zero-one-two.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second, any discussion?
Uh, just, uh, Mayor, wanna applaud you for putting it on, I know that, um, all of us have been tagged on, uh, social media, uh, in regards to the bullying that has been going on at certain schools, uh, in our community, uh, so, uh, I, I applaud you for, uh, coming forward and, uh, putting this, uh, this bold statement on, uh, uh, on our agenda tonight, and we are, uh, grateful, uh, and appreciative that you share with, uh, Mr. Spicer, we, we should all sit down and talk about this and, uh, earn the support, as well as earn our school districts, not just in the City of Carson.
Thank you, um, as I restated earlier with Mr. Hooker, I would like to have a meeting, I think Councilman Hicks, you were at a-
I was at an anti-bullying-
Anti-bullying.
Town hall meeting we had.
Town hall meeting, Mr. Hicks should be included in that, uh, 'cause I've been getting phone calls, all of my colleagues have, and so, thank you for the motion and the second, is there any further deliberation?
Only question I would ask is that we have copies of this and send it to LAUSD, and, once we get that finalized, I wanna take it back to the block captains that's in my district, that's in the president's track, that are affected, many of the residents who are affected by that, 'cause I know we're gonna do a follow-up meeting, and I wanna make sure that I have that with me.
Will do, Councilman Hicks, and we'll also, um, provide those for all the districts, that was the plan, for all the block captains, so, uh, our, uh, Public Safety Supervisor, um, Ms. Ram Munoz, who has a list of all the block captains, she's prepared to disseminate that and distribute that out to the block captains.
Thank you.
My other request is that that town hall meeting was held outside of the City of Carson, we should be looking and coordinating with Councilman Hicks and, to bring that to our community center, so we can have a, a good roundtable discussion and see, and bring in LAUSD, uh, also.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and, uh, as a matter of fact, even tonight, with Mr. Andre Spicer, who came, um, we will be inviting him, as well as his superintendent, Mr. Hooker-
Hooker, Mr. Hooker.
Who, um, was absent, um, this evening.
Yeah, I reached out to him, he's, well.
And I know Councilman Hicks is, his request was to have him be part, and so we'll reach out again, and we'll have staff, um, and we've already advised them that this is the request that you'd like to do, Madam Mayor, so, um, it, it is on their radar, at least we advise them of such, and, so we'll find out the date and work with Councilman Hicks on when he wants to have that, but they are gonna be invited, and we've already invited, advised them of such.
Okay, thank you. Is there no further deliberation, please cast your vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Item number thirty-six is, okay-
Is your item, Madam Mayor, for CCBS?
Yeah, consideration of, well, you can read it, I wanna hear your voice.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, so it's, tonight, the consideration is, uh, of only local uncontested appointments to the city's commissions, committees, and boards by mayor and city council, and consider all contested and uncontested appointments to all commissions except Planning Commission, Economic Development Commission, Environmental Commission, for your, um, discussion and approval, Madam Mayor.
Um, I think everyone's position is upfield, it's, haha, you have one vacancy-
I have mine filled, Madam Mayor.
There's a field, Councilman Deere, Councilwoman Rojas is filled, uh, are you ready to make a, no, you're not, okay, I'd like, uh, I've just been notified on the Parks and Recreation Commission, Clarence Dunning is no longer able to serve because of family, so we need to remove him from the Parks and Recreation.
Madam Mayor, can I get the last name again?
Dunning.
Okay, thank you.
Um, for the Senior Citizen Advisory Commission, I'd like-
Madam Mayor, I will move to support your, uh, ratify your removal.
Thank you. It's been moved improperly second, could you cast your vote on that one? I'm going to make a motion to fill a couple of positions that are vacant, um, the first one is the Senior Citizen Advisory Commission, Ernestine Levert-Leverte, L-E-V-E-R-E-T-T-E, I have the applications here, uh, for the Senior Citizen Advisory. For the Women's Issues, oh, let's see, you wanna know what's this position she's filling, right? Uh, she will be filling alternate number two.
What is that name again?
Ernestine, last name is spelled L-E-V-E-R-E-T-T-E.
Thank you.
For the Women's Issues Commission, Kechum, K-E-C-H-U-M Graves, alternate number one, Monica McCarson, alternate number two, Kiana Kit Graves, alternate number three. For the Youth Commission, Jamina, J-I-M-E-N-A, uh, it's an alternate position that's open on that, where is it?
You said alternate, Madam Mayor?
I believe it's an alternate on the youth, just a second. Youth Commission, yes, alternate number two. J-I-M-E-N-A, Castaneda, K-A-S-T-A-N-E-D-A.
Got it.
Those are my few appointees.
I move that we approve the mayor's appointees.
It's been moved improperly second, please cast your vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, hear the applicants if you need them.
Yes.
And that concludes our items for tonight. Am I correct? Memorial adjournments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. These are the names that I received. James Jim Brown, Pamela Neil Robinson, Dr. Celia Villalpando, William Walter Kennedy, Tina Turner.
Tina who?
Oh, Tina Turner.
Singer.
The Tina Turner. Queen of Rock and Roll. Ren Arieta, Inez Brown, Titus A. Adepoju, Urelia Juo.
Thank you, does anyone want to add, any of my colleagues wanna add, anyone? Hearing none, I'll ask our bishop to give us a quick prayer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Father, tonight we pray that you would bless, uh, these bereaved families that are part of our greater family here in the City of Carson, uh, we pray that you would encourage them and strengthen them, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you. Councilmember requests to add items to future agendas. Announcement, okay. Well, I wanted to say we're looking forward to June tenth, and also the Philippine Independence Day celebration.
Yes.
Um, we had a wonderful, I must commend the staff for the Memorial Day celebration, I saw a new twist, I'd like to get more people there, but the program itself was just, um, it was new, it had a different twist to it, so, to Mike Whitaker and the staff, you guys did an outstanding job, the only thing we need to do is add, uh, make sure we get more people out, because the event was very, very nice, very well-received. I was not able to attend the Youth Commission due to a prior commitment, but, um, who made the-
Who made, we were there, I think all of us were.
No, not the youth, the-
The team even at Carson Park.
I was, I was there, at Carson Park, and, uh, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman was there.
We were at the Youth Commission, it's called the Kickoff, at Carson Park, in the gym, gymnasium.
Yeah, I missed it in-
Very good event, um, the, uh, attendance, Madam Mayor, is increasing, but it still needs to get back to pre-pandemic, uh, numbers.
Mm-hmm.
I think the staff's working on that.
Uh, I would suggest and encourage that we stop emailing, those kids, though, they're on the phone twenty, on emailing, they are not responding, and, uh, so I would suggest that we do some old school, and each facility, each park should be required to bring at least twenty-five to fifty students, that's their job. We used to have five-hundred kids at this youth conference, there's no reason for us not to.
I remember that, yeah.
Remember that? We had all these kids here tonight, I bet you if you asked them, they didn't even know anything about it. So I encourage you to put this responsibility back on each park director, you, as a park director, you're getting paid to play, what better job? So if you can't bring twenty-five to fifty kids to a youth conference, I have a big concern. Twelve parks, minimum twenty-five to fifty kids, that should be an assignment. Councilwoman?
Yes, uh, I forgot to mention this earlier, since we were here, uh, honoring and congratulating Carson High School students, Stephen M. White has, uh, their drill team champions, they're champions again this year, so I wanted to mention that, congratulations to the Stephen M. White Drill Team, uh, hopefully they can join us this Saturday at our Philippine Independence Day Parade, uh, so I wanted to mention that. Um, I know you mentioned, uh, this Saturday is our Philippine Independence Day Festival at Veterans Park, however, we also, uh, want to mention and honor and celebrate that it is also Pride Month in the month of June, and, um, in our, uh, performances, we do have, uh, Angel Bonilla, she is performing, she is the first transgender performer on The Voice, and she will be performing on our main stage, so, congratulations to us, Pride Month, to Philippine Independence Day, um, just, June is a great month for us.
Graduation, June tenth.
So, yes, congratulations to all, see everybody-
Thank you.
-Saturday.
Saturday. Any further comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Uh, wait a minute, MPT, I'll start over here and work my way down.
Uh, so, uh, as has been indicated, uh, month of June is Father's Day, uh, but the, uh, June eleventh is our city manager's birthday, we wanna say happy birthday to him.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And then, uh, June seventeenth is my daughter Reagan's birthday, so I know she's watching, uh- And then June seventeenth is my daughter Reagan's birthday, so I know she's watching. Happy birthday to you. Be home soon, soon as we get out of here. And then I also wanted to report that went to the ICS Conference just to be in compliance, and went to hopefully bring back great development to our community. We went and had some promising interactions with a few companies, so just wanted to report that and do my due diligence in my report. Also, the City of Torrance, Torrance Transit is having a grand opening of their new Torrance Transit Center, and since they're one of our partners, Mrs. Turner has invited the whole City Council on Friday to come and share in that ribbon cutting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I too attended ICSC Conference and also was in Palm Springs, we were there, get some information there. The ICSC is not as larger as it used to be, but, you know, I was there.
Pandemic.
The pandemic? Oh, okay. Okay. Councilman Hicks.
Thank you. I'm doing my annual Father's Day ice cream giveaway at Ken's Ice Cream on Sunday, June the eighteenth, from one until four. So, Madam Mayor, I know you want to go by and get your...
Black walnut.
Your black walnut ice cream. The first is, over two hundred scoops of ice cream will be given out. Each, each year, we do at least three hundred. We never do this to two hundred. So if you know where Ken's Ice Cream is, at one eight five one one, South Avalon, we do it every year for Father's Day, and you must be a Carson resident, and just come and get you some free ice cream with you and your kids.
And the kids, too?
And the kids. We don't discriminate everybody. And then on June the twentieth, my grandson turns six, so he will be six years old. I was on this council when he was born, and now he's turning six. And then tomorrow, on June the seventh, he graduates from Broad Acres, going to the first grade. So time is moving forward, so I have two graduates, my daughter graduate. I couldn't go to ICSC because my daughter was graduating from Cal State Dominguez Hills, my youngest, and now tomorrow, my grandson is graduating from kindergarten, going to the first grade, so education is okay in our, in our household today, but we'll see what happens next week.
Before I talk about graduates, my grandson is graduating, and he got a full ride to Clark University. Awesome. Paid for everything, all the way down to an ERASER. He is a four-point-old student, and he gets upset when he gets a B. So I will be there at his graduation, that's why I will be late for the Philippine Independence Day celebration. And the love of my life is here, my little granddaughter. I'm in love. The first girl in a long time, so thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I also want to encourage people to attend, as Councilwoman Rojas has done, the Philippine Independence Day, one hundred and twenty-five years since they declared independence from Spain, and that's a great anniversary to recognize in world history, and it will take place, of course, this Saturday on June tenth, starts at seven thirty in the morning, goes to six o'clock. It's an all-day event. All people are welcome, all ages, and it's a free event. In addition, I want to give my public verbal report that I also attended the ICSC in Las Vegas representing the City of Carson. I met with Mr. David Simon and many other developers who are interested in making Carson more successful economically, and so good meetings, good information gathered with meeting many, many people there. And thirdly, I want to say happy Father's Day to everyone that's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, and also I want to emphasize, we don't have a council meeting before Juneteenth, right? No? No? The Juneteenth celebration is on the seventeenth. As I stated earlier, Carson started this years ago, and it's a holiday, so we're always out front, so come out to the Juneteenth celebration at Mills Park on Saturday the seventeenth.
Employees off?
Employees off, it's a holiday for them, yes. We gave them a holiday. Yes, yes, yes. Just, I did. Okay, to my sign language new partners, we'd like to take a photo with you at the conclusion of this council meeting, but I do want to thank you for providing your services here tonight. Thank you so much. We're gonna, where's our, she left. Okay, CAC, you're on. We're going to take a photo with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. I thought we was going to be here until eleven. Thank you.